Support Cards. The Napa Valley Community College District will not oppose SEIU efforts to establish a separate temporary hourly bargaining unit that is limited to position classifications in the list attached to the agreement. Subject to perb recognition of an exclusive representative for temporary hourly employees, the parties will meet and negotiate in good faith to develop a collective bargaining agreement. The settlement agreement does not constitute an admission of wrongdoing by either party or both parties understand requirements to comply with legal requirements relating to good faith negotiations under the EERA. The settlement agreement does not provide for monetary compensation to any party. Thank you. And then I just want to, since the room has several new people in it since the beginning of the meeting, I just want to recognize. Was there something you wanted to add or no?
No, I was just saying.
So we had, so we recognize newly tenured faculty, and they were Naomi Kinesi in sociology, Marcel Ignacio, I get this one, Cassenia?
Cassenia.
Cassenia. Cassenia Owens, Christine Pruitt, Greg Scott Rose, Gregory Scott Rose, and Dr. Mary Williams, who all now have the designation of professor. And we will move on now to our Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand on one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And I would like to move to adoption of the agenda. Seeing or hearing no changes or movement on the agenda? I will move that the agenda is adopted. 7.1, Public Comment. Public comment and guidelines at this time, the Board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes for comments to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the Board has jurisdiction. The public may ask the Board to place an item related to the business of the district on a future Board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. At this time, the Board Chair will poll those in attendance regarding their intent to speak on any item on the agenda. Right now I have two cards, and I'm going to start with Mr. Shanker.
Hi, my name is Gopal Shankar. I'm an energy consultant based in Napa Valley. Company's called Record to Energy. I'm working on a new initiative to get 30,000 cars off the road, replace 60,000 cars with electric vehicles, and have 100% of the electricity for the EVs come from renewables in five years. So I'm going up and down the valley presenting this idea to people so I can get buy-in into the vision. But directly relevant to Napa Valley College here is I'd like to come speak to the Board, you know, or tell me what the process is so that you hear more than, you know, over three minutes what I'm trying to do. As part of this initiative, on Sunday, I'm organizing with the Sierra Club Sustainable Napa County, Marin Clean Energy, an event here in the parking lot. So it will be a Drive Electric Week for, an event in Napa as part of the National Drive Electric Week, which has been going on since the 8th of September through the 16th. So between 1:00 and 4:00 in the afternoon, it'll be like an EV petting zoo. Car owners will, you know, allow you to touch their cars and get into maybe rides, ride in some of them. There'll also be dealers from Chevrolet, Honda, and Toyota, maybe Nissan, I'm not sure, and electric bikes. So that, this is to help kickstart the 60,000 EV transformation, you know, over the next five years. That's it. I'm assuming this is not a place for questions and so forth, but I'll come back. Thank you.
Would you have a suggestion of who he might put information in front of or?
Catherine.
Catherine can, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And welcome back, Mr. Dan DeGardy.
Well, thank you. It is a pleasure to be back here. The reason I'm here tonight is to speak about TIP, the Trades Introduction Program, most of you should be familiar with. It's coming back to Napa next month. I'm going to hand these out to pass to the trustees. These are the generic flyers, but dates that are relevant you should know is October 1st at 6:00 PM is orientation in the library. Interviews are October 9th at 5:30, and class starts on the 22nd. Graduation will be January 26th. Normally we start with 20 students and usually gets pared down to about 16 or 17 because we're very strict on attendance. That's part of the learning process. And we've talked about training more people, but in the reality, even though work is booming right now, it wouldn't be, it'd be kind of disingenuous for us to train more people than there are jobs for. So, but I think it's, I think it's been a very good class. This will be the eighth cohort. We've been twice to Marin, twice to Santa Rosa, twice to Solano, and now this is the second time at Napa. And of the graduates, 99 of them have been indentured into state-qualified apprenticeship programs, so I'm very proud of that. Let's see. Oh, and then on a personal note, congratulations to Michael Baldini on his election. And good luck to Mary Ann and Kaiser, and Kyle on their elections. Personal note, I've had hip replacement surgery, and it's actually been going quite well. It's been three months and three days, little rough for a couple of weeks, but back to, almost back to, I'm back to slightly better than it was before surgery, almost better than normal, but I've been doing physical therapy, walking precincts for Jeff Dodd, so that's hopefully getting me in pretty good shape. Does anybody have any questions? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have any other public comment other than what cards that I have? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed, and we move on to constituent group reports. Academic Senate Report, Amanda Badgett.
Good evening, Board, again. You've already heard from me once tonight. I'd like to start off with a good bit of news, somewhat personal to the art department. A student that was a former student of mine and of Eric's when he was still in faculty, as well as our now-retired colleague Fane Hancock, made the national news on the 1st of September. Our student, Arlene Correa Valencia, was on Weekend Edition, the NPR Saturday morning show, and it was about her work that she is currently doing at California College of the Arts. There you go. California College of the Arts, she's working on her MFA. And the work is directly related to the fires, which of course we're approaching the one-year anniversary, the fires, and especially the impact on the workers, the farm workers during that time, who were both fighting and working very hard to protect the grapes, but also, as Arlene says in the interview, worried about coming to the shelter here for fear of ice. And so this is a particularly pointed statement because she herself is a doc recipient, and much of her studio work is around notions of identity, and especially right now, the tenuousness of her situation. So I wanted to, it's archived, you can go hear it. She is a truly extraordinary student and a wonderful product, not just of the art department, but of this college, and I thought you should know that. On, and it, much more, shall I say, I'm not going to say pedestrian note, but in a little bit, oops, sorry, we will be hearing about AB 705 from my esteemed and dedicated colleagues in English and Math. And as you will see, our faculty are working very hard to ensure we meet the expectations of the state while continuing to provide sound and rigorous instruction to our students. And as we're heading into Week 6 of the semester, committees are meeting, both the Senate and District Committees, and many of these committees are grappling with revising Board policy and our procedures. Indeed, the Council of Presidents is taking a look at our beloved, though slightly long in the tooth, D 1140 on shared governance, which spells out everyone's role here at the college. Among the statements in the document, and I'm just going to quote briefly, "Shared governance is a commitment to open communication and collaboration in the spirit of trust. Everyone works to achieve what is best for the entire college and its future, making students the primary focus." So I guess I want to take this opportunity to remind everyone that the leaders seated here are elected and serve in the context of shared governance as the voice of their constituents. When Board members solicit input and information directly from individual constituents, this circumvents our processes and the structures that we commit in this document to uphold. And so with that, I will close for tonight.
Thank you. So we have some changes here, right? So first we have, so Bob Harris is not here.
No, no, he is.
Oh, he is?
He is.
There he is.
He's waiting in the wings.
Why are you back there?
Because he's trying to make me do the report.
Oh. Okay, so who's doing it?
So I'm going to start and he's going to finish.
Okay.
Because I just wanted to tell you with, that, well, I was going to say, we've had a leadership change. I've stepped aside as the Senate President. This is sort of my last chance to come in and say amusing things to the Board. And Bob Harris will be taking over for, as the President of the Administrative Senate. I'm just going to quickly talk about leadership is up and running. We're, we have a good class. We've had two sessions, so again, we'd encourage folks to consider leadership at some time. You can ask trustee Baker what she thinks so far of what we're doing, and certainly, you know, encourage you to do that in the future. The Senate has, we've met, we've done a few things, and the biggest one was coming up with my demise. So, come on up. And so I will, I will not get to see you all. This will be one of the last times I see the Board.
Oh.
Yeah. I'll see you next month for a report, but that's pretty much, will be almost, most it. I'm down to double digits, by the way, so.
No offense to you, Bob, but we're going to miss Ken.
That's why I had him come up here tonight. I delay it. No, as Ken said, it's a pleasure to be here, and he, you know, the years that he's been here, he's served as President for this, the Senate Administrative for a long time, and it looks like folks sort of recycle and recircle back around. But the only thing I'm sort of taken aback is by his glee with which, but, no, we will, we will, last week Ken actually stepped down as the President, and so by our bylaws and rules, I stepped up. Maria Villa Gomez is our Vice President. Michelle Mano is the Secretary, and then Joe Latonski is stepping in as our Treasurer. So I think it's a good, a good role for Joe as the Controller of the College to be the Treasurer. But we will be moving and reviewing administrative regs and policies, just like every other group, and trying to get everything in line, and we have about 35 people. We're trying to get everybody engaged and move forward, but I'm happy to be here, and we will be having some sort of function for Ken. We will find him and we'll get him, so. Stop smiling, Ken. That concludes my report for now.
Thank you, and welcome to the Board Room on a monthly basis.
Is it going to get a weapon?
Oh, yeah, right? Who protects us?
Yeah.
All right. So Associate Students of Napa Valley College Report, I understand Rafael couldn't make it, but the report will be read by Josefa.
So I will read his report as it is. So Rafael Manzo, greetings Board. This particular Thursday, I am unable to attend the meeting and report myself because of an academic activity. I'm in a costume rehearsal tonight in Yountville preparing for tomorrow's opening for performance of As You Like It by our own Shakespeare, Napa Valley. I thank my student trustee for being my designee tonight. ASNVC was offered the chance to be the nonprofit volunteers, excuse me, for the Napa Silverado's baseball game on August 24th. Thank you Scott Allen for the opportunity. We were able to raise somewhere around $200 for our budget, and it was fun to be part of NVC Day. After the Labor Day weekend, ASNVC assisted the inter-club council with a two-day club rush event. The event was a collaboration effort this year, adding the Welcome Center as a planner. We agreed to showcase Student Affairs resources at the event, and thank Oscar de Haro for paying for all of the pizzas. Coming up for ASNVC, we will be hosting an art wall for suicide prevention and awareness after last year's success. Look for that on the display at the library stage area within the next two weeks. We are hosting a table in front of the library next week, that is September 17, commemorating a Constitution Day. Have a great meeting. Cheers from backstage Rafael Manzo. The end.
Thank you, Josefa. All right. Classified Association Report, Jan Chara is not here, and nobody seems to be here to report in her place, is that correct? Okay. And then Classified Senate Report, welcome to the Board Room, Martin.
I'm, I guess, the interim President, and I think we stabilized the ship, so I'm here to let you know that the report is very brief. I'm just looking forward to better days and better ways. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and we have, it looks like Eileen Tejada here to speak on behalf of Kristi Iwamoto, Faculty Association Report.
Thank you, yes, I'm Eileen Tejada, and I am going to read this the way Kristi wrote it, so I just, anyways, so she says, hello. I'm sorry that I cannot be with you tonight. I'm currently on my way to the airport so that I can attend the Community College Association's statewide faculty equity and diversity committee meeting in Ontario. I have entrusted my report, and she told me I had to read this and she was going to check it, I have entrusted my report to my amazing Vice President, Eileen Tejada. We have had our first general faculty meeting today. We were pleased to have statements from our District 2 candidates, trustee Amy Martenson and Mr. Jeff Dodd, who came to visit us and take questions. I would also like to extend an invitation to other candidates to speak to our faculty at our general meeting in October. If this is something you're interested in, please feel free to contact me via email or phone. Negotiations are ongoing, things are moving along, but of course, we still have lots of work to tackle this year. We are working hard, and we remain optimistic about our progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
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 Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I've always thought, Elaine. I won't forget that ever again, I promise. All right. Napa Valley College Foundation Report.
Okay, good evening, Board. I'd like everybody to look over at this wall over here, and what that, what that used to be, right? Does anybody miss the closet? No, so it's my office now, and I want to thank all of you for my beautiful new space, and that's Dr. Kraft, Bob Parker, even Ken, he provided some decorating advice, just so you know, and, and Mountain Facility, so it looks great, so come by. I'm been pressured into doing a little competitive decorating Halloween stuff, just so you know, yeah, right, from Charo. So anyway, thank you for the beautiful space, to Dr. Kraft, it looks really nice. And I also want to thank Bruce Kethrin for being here tonight. He is our new incoming Treasurer. We have a new slate of Board Officers for the Foundation, so we're very happy to have him here, and thank him for all of his support. Last month, we worked hard on a major planned gift, and we have two new planned gifts in the work as well, that are significant. So in your folders tonight, you, there was an article about Dr. Chris and the matching gift campaign, that was a really nice article in the paper that I, you have seen. We are, Margot and I are again going to the Latin Leaders Roundtable tomorrow, and we're taking two students from this STEM program, and that seems to be really, the students are really appreciating, it's a beneficial, kind of mutually good thing that we're doing. And the VWT stuff is coming along. We are working on our invite list right now for the big event so that we can announce the new Wine Education Center. And we've, and hired an accounting firm, and an auditing firm to help us with our bookkeeping, so that's all in the process now that we started our own since July 1st, which I know Bob's very excited about, and of the college. And I have a new assistant, and her name is, it's pronounced Swanee, like the Swanee River, even it looks like Suwannee, and she has been a big help with coming over to Salesforce and some new database stuff. She's a former Air Force logistics officer. She's got two tweens, lives in Benicia, so flexible with her time, and she's been very helpful. So I'd like you to all come by and meet her too, when you're around. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ann. All right. President Cabinet, President's Cabinet Reports, Ron.
Yeah, Oscar, you want to go first, please?
There's a couple items I just want to share with you from the report that I sent you last week, one of which is that if you're asked by your colleagues, by your trustee colleagues of the state whether an epic college has a promised program in place, yes, we do. As of August 29th, we have this in place. There's funding that's provided by AB 19, which is legislation that mandates, in essence, these, this program. Received $258,000, with additional $20,000 that was, that was passed through DAS for a one-time, for a one-time amount. Basically what this does is that it allows students who are eligible for financial aid, and those who are not eligible for any financial aid, to receive an enrollment fee waiver. So that's, that's sort of the gist of it, is for first-time students. They need to be in 12, 12 units, full-time, and must apply for financial aid. Again, one of the main changes of this program is, again, is for those individuals as well who are not eligible for financial aid. Many, many, many times we'd run into students, our parents, and say, you know what, I'm not going to apply for financial aid, first because it's laborious, your process, but secondly, because I don't think I'm going to qualify. That should not be a reason or excuse to use anymore because precisely if you don't qualify for any financial aid, you will minimally qualify for the fee waiver. Another, another highlight is that every year around this time, I make my rounds with all the schools here within their service area, and I've arranged to be, to meet and to visit seven, or high schools, and I've already have, had done two. This afternoon, we did Valley Oak. And the idea for these visits is to visit or to actually to meet new personnel that's associated with administration and our counseling group within those schools, but also I take a group of student affairs staff members assigned to those schools to do the outreach and to planning for any future needs that they may have, whether it be for pre- enrollment services, or advising, or whatever it is. So we have that, this, again, this activity is done every year, and, and so I've done two, we have five more. The other piece that I want to share with you is that it's the last item on the report, and it's, and just to give an idea what the capture rate is, in other words, how many of those students graduating from my, from Napa County, from Napa City Schools, how many of those students are actually coming to Napa Valley College? And the information that I have for you shows that overall, our capture rate is 30%. So 30% of the Napa County, excuse me, of the Napa City High School seniors are coming to Napa Valley College. And then we also have the top three. In the top three of our local high schools, we have Vintage High School with a capture rate of 34.3% of the seniors from last year who graduated and are here now. American High School is a second top feeder with 31.5% of those seniors from last year coming here and are here at the college. And then we have Napa High School with 31, with 30%. So overall, I think it's a very good, it's a very good effort on our part, it's very good capture rate that we have, and what we plan on doing is that for high school breakfast this year, in 2019, we're going to provide this sort of data for all the schools who are attending, because what I've learned is that schools want to learn how, where are their students going, and of those students coming to Napa College, how well are they doing? So we're going to have a whole slew of information, of data information for them, for that day, that I believe will make them happy and hopefully give information so that they can use for their own Board meetings. So aside from that, there's other items, but I think at this point, I'd like to just share that. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
I have a question. So I'm trying to look at this and move away from my mic at the same time. So the number of students with applications versus the number of students enrolled, what happens between there? That we've got applications, but some don't enroll?
Right, exactly. What happens is that, is that they don't enroll, and for example, currently Project Rise, when the project with Student Affairs, is following up with those individuals to find out why they didn't enroll. That's been sort of a big mystery. I mean, if you could be applying to Napa College, why aren't you attending? And so we have found that in many cases, we did a survey about three years ago, and we found that some of the reasons were that they went on to this school instead, they had been accepted to a four-year school, and they chose that option first. We also learned that, that they were working more hours than anticipated, so therefore they wanted to spend more, more time earning money than they come to school at this point. And the third reason was that your life happens. Their intentions were very, very well meant, but at the end of the day, they just couldn't, you followed through. So we're doing surveys and follow-up because it's important to us to find out why. I mean, if you went as far as applying, why aren't you here? One other reason what we've learned is that, is that many schools have it as their class project to the career centers, to go online and apply to this college as a backup or as a possibility, and so that's, it's, so we have high numbers.
So it might be like an exercise, is that?
Exactly, yeah. Not all schools do that, but we know that's a couple that do that as exercise. So that's why you have that, that large gap or void there.
Can I add to that? Because I know the practice at Valley Oak too, when Hector was working with the students, was even when they said they were going to go to another community college, was to also, just in case, apply at Napa Valley College, so that might, if that's happening at all the high schools, that might be bumping up the numbers too.
Correct.
Thank you, Oscar.
Thank you. And by the way, although I bought that pizza, I never got any of it, but that's okay. Next year.
Bob has presentation tonight, so doesn't have a report at this time, and Charo, I don't think, do you? Yes, thank you.
Good evening. I just want to make an announcement that Napa Valley College Open Enrollment to Make Any Changes to Your Health Plan is open from September the 10th through October the 5th. We had an open enrollment fair yesterday, on September the 12th, and we will have a flu clinic on October the 9th. And the Office of Human Resources have kicked off officially our wellness program with a spot on our HR website showcasing our wellness newsletter. Additionally, in our recruitment area, we're trying to put more focus on recruiting veterans, and we have attended the Travis Air Force Base Career Fair that was held on September the 6th, and we also attended the 18th Annual Diversity, Employment, Career Fair on September the 5th. I'm proud to announce that we will also be holding our second Napa Valley College Job Fair on November the 30th. This is our job fair. No other employers are invited. This is our chance to showcase who we are, the wonderful- This is our chance to showcase who we are, the wonderful services and resources that we provide, and encourage everyone to apply for our wonderful vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. So, a few things for you tonight. I do have a presentation with two faculty members coming up on AB 705, which is one of the big things that we have on our plate right now in academic affairs. But just a couple of other quick things. First off, I want to give the board an update on where we're at with enrollment for the fall semester right now. As of census date, which passed on September 4th, which is always a good benchmark for us to use, we're about 9.8% down from where we were one year ago. Now, as I had reported at the meeting in August, that's not even. That doesn't mean that every program is seeing a 9% decrease in enrollment. Some programs, I see some faculty members here, they're bursting at the seams. They have more than they can handle oftentimes in the classes and wait lists even, in a few cases. So, it's not an even picture across the college in terms of what's happening with the enrollment. But overall, we're 9% down. That's about 7% headcount that we're down from one year ago. So, in response to that, as we're building the schedule for spring, we're taking a really close look at the enrollment data from fall. And we're making sure that what we're building for spring is meeting student demand as it currently exists. And so, we are downsizing a little bit in a couple of areas, offering fewer sections and consolidating in a couple of areas, so that we're meeting student need, but trying to spread across, spread the core sections across the day, so that we're giving students adequate choices as well from among the classes that we're offering. So, I'll keep the board up to date on that as we're doing that schedule build. And certainly, in the spring, we'll talk some more about that as we're looking long-term at an enrollment management plan that we'll be putting together this year to help us get situated and to project out for a few years. A couple of other quick things. So, Professor Badgett stole my thunder a tiny bit there with the art student, with Arlene Correa. For those of you that are interested, the written report that's attached, that is attached to the agenda or will be uploaded to the agenda, actually has a link to the story on KQED on it. So, there's a link embedded in that PDF for you, so you can follow it to read and see the wonderful story about our student. It's quite extraordinary. She was one of the more gifted students that we had come through our program. It was an absolute delight to work with. And we were thrilled and very, very proud of the work that she's doing as she's completing her MFA at the California College of the Arts. A couple of miscellaneous things for you here. Police Academy graduation this Saturday, 10 o'clock, for those of you that have it on your calendar. We'll look forward to seeing you there. Also, a little bit on dual enrollment. So, many of you may have seen that we have our dual enrollment course running up in St. Helena. Right now, things are going really swell with that. We have 35 students that are enrolled in the courses. We're very excited with Madison Butts, our instructor from the math department, who's teaching that course for us. And we're really, really excited with the way that it's going so far. And really grateful to the math department. I see the math department coordinator who just walked in the room here. Grateful to the math department for facilitating this and getting this set up. So, based on how that runs, there's interest in offering the next section, Math 108, in the spring, depending on how many of the students successfully complete the Math 106 course, the college algebra course, this fall. So, more to come on that. And we anticipate more interest in dual enrollment agreements like that. And so, we'll be hopefully bringing more MOUs to the board this year as we're continuing to work with our K-12 partners in the county here to get our courses onto the high school campuses.
I just want to say, Eric, congratulations. The article that was written was phenomenal. And I think what it just showed is how you're driving that and growing that so much with your, I think, persistence. And, you know, just not wasting a minute of any day to be out there and doing that type of outreach. So, congratulations and thank you so much for all the work you do.
Absolutely, thank you. And that'll conclude my report for tonight. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think we have, Carol Lee's going to be doing PIO.
Hi. Doug sends his regards. He couldn't be with us tonight. I don't know if you had a chance to see the new format for our report. We're looking for some feedback. It's not quite perfect. But instead of having all of the text for all of the articles, it links you to online resources for the rest of the article. If you would scroll down a little bit. Not a lot of news in the last month. We had a wonderful commentary by Ron and a complimentary piece by the editorial board of the Register. You might want to check those out. Those are actually the first two on the top. And then, the Silverados wrapped up their season. We had a wonderful NBC day. Thank you to ASNBC for being our volunteers. And at the very end, there are some more interesting statistics on our social media analytics, which... There you go. Twitter is our strongest medium, but we are growing Facebook every day, getting more followers. And on October 17th, the Legislative Breakfast will be kicking off at 8:00 a.m. And Mike Thompson will be here in person this year. Thank you.
Carol Lee, do you know, the Silverados, did they end up with a winning season, losing season? Do you know?
I think they were in fifth place, so they just missed the playoffs.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, but they did really well.
I'm very proud of it. It was at the NBC night, I think, a lot of us in the room, I've forgotten who was there, but we got to throw out some pitches, which was exciting, I think. Who did? Who threw out pitches? Did you throw?
I didn't throw out a pitch, but...
Maybe Kyle threw out a pitch?
Kyle. And Merrick, I believe.
Merrick?
And Charo.
That's right. Howard, Howard, that's who it was. Yes, and I did.
Their last game of the season was a killer. It's like 14, they won 14. It was a great finish, 14 to 4, or something like that.
Yeah, wonderful.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. If you can open mine up a little bit. The, there's a lot of redundant kind of pieces in here, but I want to, I do want to talk about a couple of different things. I had received, Bob, this is a little bit on your watch. I had received a very nice, kind of a heads-up email from Bob and crew just on this, recognize the benefits of California's community college athletic programs. The CCLC director was an athlete and is very interested in seeing, over the long run, in the middle of this paragraph, right now, California colleges may not offer competitive sports athletic scholarships of any kind. And there are some, there is some conversation, you know, from the legislative piece, and it's more complicated, but they're looking for some support measures, some ways to support if they can and still stay legal if they can. But I think the bigger piece here is recognizing, and Bob, you could, you're certainly welcome to talk about this, but you came in with Jerry Dunlap, I think, last May. And I just posted some of those, and you might just talk about the success of our athletes.
Yeah, that article was, I thought was very powerful, because it came from a leader high in the league. And of all the schools across the state in community college ranks that offers athletic programs, one of the things that gets lost is a lot of folks have a feeling that intercollegiate athletics may be a waste of time or might not be an investment in the future. But the facts remain via the CalPass records that the students here in community colleges across the state, to participate in intercollegiate athletics, they have to take at least 12 units per semester. And that typically outranks the average, the workload or the course load of the average student at the community college. And the state in the California Community College Athletic Association puts, it's very much like the NCAA or aspires to be like the NCAA. So, if any of you've spent time with the NCAA, you might know where that's going. But there's a lot of resources that are placed to provide success. Typically, the typical student athlete is somebody who's aspiring to transfer. Not all, but typically, they do. And they don't necessarily are looking to transfer to participated sports. The overwhelming majority are looking to get a four-year degree or beyond. And the athletic programs are a vehicle for which to do that. So, these reports come around, there's a lot of time effort that is spent in compiling this information. And it's across the state. And when I sit on the Management Council, the CCCAA, the athletic organization, presidents, vice presidents, one of the things that does come up typically and repeatedly is the efforts that are put forth by these students. So, it's not something that's new. It's something that is probably, they're looking to gain a foothold and a little more strength to highlight what it is that these programs do. Because not all these students go on to play sports athletically, I mean professionally. It's a vehicle through which they can really highlight. And, you know, all the anecdotal evidence and the stories and such about how somebody learned how to, you know, persevere, stick through things, adversity, things like that. So, but it's nice to be able to put some data and some quantitative data to it.
Good, thank you. And I wanted the board to kind of hear this. We don't, we talk a lot about CTE and STEM and a lot of their programs, but you don't hear a lot about the accomplishments of our student athletes and...
Well, and those student athletes who are accomplishing those things in athletics are in STEM, are in CTE, and are in those, I mean, so they're, they are the students, yes.
There is a, I posted this, Jeff Sheckman in Napa Broadcasting did a nice interview with Chancellor Oakley. The chancellor has taken the helm of California at a time with a lot of change. There's a lot of change that he's initiated, so it's not without some controversy. But he's staying out ahead. And I would encourage you to listen to it, because, you know, you say a lot on the air. And thank you for doing that, Jeff. CCC Apply, our favorite thing, basically is a chancellor-driven state system. And if you've tried to apply on that, and Oscar alluded to this, we've done our best to make our local website more friendly, including two tabs. You know, one, I want to take a lot of classes, and another tab, I just want to take a class or one single, and thank you for that. There is some effort here, I think, finally, from the chancellor's office to recognize that students, current students, think differently. It's all social media, phone-driven, and they're not simply going to wade through four levels of stuff to enroll. And they have identified as one of the main reasons why students are, you know, inquiring, as Oscar talked about. They would like to go, but then they just are not finishing, they're abandoning the application halfway through. And so, we're losing students in the system, I think, who would just ordinarily, given an easier path, give us a try. And that's a shame. So, we're working on that as we go. I did put a little article in here. It's of note, this community college's pilot four-year program. Most of the initiatives came out of San Diego City Community College District with the chancellor down there. Why this is noteworthy is the pilot program was essentially created to just see whether or not it would work. It's working. They extended the program to 22, 23 in this one area. And I believe this is health information management. Is that, yes. And recognizing that students need continuity of the program for a while, or they're not going to enroll. They're doing pretty well with it. What it tells me generally from a trend analysis, that we're going to continue down this road, I think. I've seen softening, actually, not hardening, at the CSU and the university level. They just want to make sure that the community colleges are definitely addressing only those pieces that are non-competitive. I put in here, and I put specific language, so please see my language, right? We did trot up a few years ago, the respiratory therapy, that's already in place in the system. And there has been some inquiry about the VWT. And there's also been for a potential future. And also, it doesn't preclude us from taking a look at it. As you know, this will be a faculty-driven event. And it doesn't come without retooling the institution. I mean, there's a lot of issues involved around this. I'm frankly glad we didn't get it at the beginning, let the others kind of plow through some of these issues. And next time up, I think that we may be in a position to apply, should we want that. The other things, there was, I think the other things have been... Oh, hi there. The other things have been mentioned. There is a brief list of things that I attended. Must be a shift change. They do, I think they change over... Is that the phone? Could be Janine calling me, checking in, right? I'm just going to say thank you very much, and we're going to move right along.
Can I ask a question about the CCC Apply? Because I haven't done it with students lately, but I was, this might be an Oscar question. But I know what used to hang up my students was the fact that it was two parts, that you first did the first part, and a lot of them thought they were done. And they had to go back in and get a number and do the second part. And I was always wondering if it was possible to, after they did the first part, to have it be automatic that they were sent the number, so they know they have to go back in and do a second part. And I don't even know if you have control over it in that way.
Pretty much, the product that we use is, it was created, it was given to us by the chancellor's office. They do allow, there's about two pages that colleges can use as their supplemental information, anything that the colleges want to add. But the first four or five pages is basically what we have, and that's the procedure that we follow. So, it is a bit, it is a bit long, and it's cumbersome. And I think that's the idea, is to sort of work this to create another product that's going to be more easier to use and more student-friendly.
Do they give any, are they working on it? Like, has anybody ever discussed that particular issue, that when they do the first part, as soon as they, that they get automatically an email with the number and the steps to go back in? Has that ever been discussed?
That's what it's discussed, and those are the things that they've been looking at, because again, this is a common problem throughout the state. And so, that's in the works of being, of being worked on, basically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that everything?
Yes, it is.
All right. 10.1, approval of minutes. Hearing no changes or seeing no objections? Minutes, I move to approve the minutes. All right, we'll move on to 11.1. This is Eric's presentation on the update on AB 705. And I would just like to inquire with the board, who had an opportunity to be on the webinar with the league? Okay. You did too? Okay, great. I thought it was a great webinar. So, with that, take it away, Eric.
All right. Good evening, Board of Trustees. So, I'm going to get the PowerPoint presentation up here. This will be a presentation from three of us, however. And so, the rock stars in the room here are the two folks that I have over here to my right. So, I want to introduce them to the board. So, if you guys could stand up here for a second. So, Professor Shawna Bynum is the chair of our math department. And Dr. Erin DeFranco is the chair for our English department. And so, we've been working on this presentation together over the last week or so. And so, they have parts of it that they're going to present. I'll present some parts of it as well. And we'll all be here for your questions at the end of this. So, before I dive into the specifics of the presentation that I have here, I want to note that the presentation is long, and some of this is just to be an artifact for you. So, this is appended to the board documents for this meeting. And so, in the future, if you want to go back and read through again what we're doing, this is an opportunity for you to do so. So, again, this gets a little weedy, but this is a pretty weedy topic that we're discussing here. So, I will, to the best of my ability, as we go through this, stick to the goals that I have up here in front of you. So, these are the goals that I have for the presentation with you here tonight. First off, we want to make sure that the board is educated about the intent of AB 705, and then specifically, what steps we are taking as an institution to ensure that we are in compliance along with the timeline that's been given to us. Second goal for the presentation is to provide you with a preview of curriculum revisions that should be coming through. And we are targeting right now, bringing those to you here at the board in December. And so, we want to make sure that you have an adequate context for that as we're bringing those curriculum revisions through. Third, to outline the scope and impact of AB 705 on the institution. And then, finally, to help you articulate policy-level questions for future discussions and any actions that may be necessary by the board... and any actions that may be necessary by the Board to ensure that the college remains in compliance with it. So those are the high-level overarching goals that we have here for the presentation tonight. So first off, I have been giving you just little brief snippets of this at every single report that I've given to you over the last, going on almost a year now. But I want to just cover briefly what the legislation is. So again, AB 705 is Assembly Bill 705 that was authored by Jackie Irwin, a Democrat from Ventura County. And this is an Assembly member who's had a deep interest in higher education here in the state for a long time. She was instrumental in the Basic Skills Initiative and has been involved with the Student Success Initiatives here in the state for a long time as a sponsor of legislation that is aimed at increasing student success in the state. So the basics of the legislation are as follows. It is a reform to student placement processes for English, math, and ESL course sequences. Specifically, the AB 705 will require colleges to place students into college-level English and math if they have graduated high school within the past 10 years and select transfer as a goal, with an idea towards maximizing the probability that they will complete math and English within one year. So this is the intent of the bill that is, that was passed and that we're working with now. This will require us to use high school grades, GPA, and other measures to determine student preparation for college-level work, and decreasing reliance on assessment exams that have been used previously. Finally, part of the intent of the legislation, and it's important to keep this in mind as we're looking at this, are the equity implications of the current systems that we use here in California, but nationally. This is not just something that's specific to California, which is an important thing for us to remember here. The conversations regarding the best way to remediate students coming into college in English and math is a nationwide conversation, and it's been an ongoing and developing one. This didn't come out of thin air. And so our faculty in these areas have been involved in these conversations for many years, and this is a follow-on to decades' worth of work. But part of the intent of this is to address some of the equity implications of this, meaning that oftentimes what the data would show was that students from historically underrepresented student populations were placed at higher rates into the remedial sequence and completed the transfer-level course at a lower rate than their counterparts in other ethnic groups. And so this is part of why the state is looking at that, because again, the California Community College system serves everybody. It is an open-access system that serves the top 100% of students in the state of California. So a little bit about our response before we dive into what English and math are doing specifically on this. So this has been on our radar since before the legislation was actually passed. We knew it was coming, we've been involved in conversations about it. The Math Department and the English Department have been involved in conversations for longer than this legislation has been in existence, looking, as I said, at how we sequence students through and get them up to transfer level in both math and English, but also in ESL. So this is building on ongoing work that our faculty have already been doing here at the college for many years. Currently, the department faculty have been evaluating and revising curriculum, comparing new mandates to ongoing efforts. They've been looking at new placement models, processes, and guidance. We've put together, we had a meeting of a leadership team a couple of weeks ago to kind of keep us all coordinated and on task for the year as we're looking at the specific tasks that we need to complete. We've been looking also, assessing the impact on the programs beyond English and math. So one of the things that you always need to remember when we're looking at English and math curriculum, is that when you change that, you've changed the educational experience for almost every student at the college. They are the universal courses for every program. And so they are significant, and any change to them, even minor changes, has a large impact on the institution and has a large impact on all students. So even though what we're looking at here is what we're doing with math and English, you have to understand that this is everything. So we might be talking about 15 courses total that we're looking at revising. It affects 700 other courses on campus and how students sequence through those. So this has significant impact for the district as a whole, and it's an important thing to keep in mind. So as, I know that Mary Ann had indicated that she, pardon me, was able to call into the webinar yesterday with the CCLC. So as you're hearing the questions and seeing the questions that are being articulated by your state bodies, to ask of us as we're bringing parts of this forward to your, to the Board for your consideration with curriculum and other things, remember that this is multifaceted, and it affects everything that we do as an institution. So there's a lot of assessment that has to be done about how this impacts not just curriculum, but also it affects counseling, it affects advising, it affects class scheduling, it affects just about everything that we do here. So there's a lot of moving parts to this that we're assessing this year, and some of it, we are able to nail down specifics, and some of it, there's going to be a little bit of a question mark going into fall of 2019 on some aspects of it. So with that, I would like to turn the flow over to Dr. DeFranco to talk a little bit about what English is doing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as Vice President and Chair indicated, we've been discussing this since the law was passed and since Chancellor directives came down, beginning in the spring and through the summer. Right now, we are following along with the law and the Chancellor's directive in terms of their recommendations about student placement. As was indicated, placement tests are going away. They're no longer a viable tool for determining how students get placed into different classes. The mandate kind of recommends this breakdown into three tiers for our students. Those coming out of high school with a GPA of over 2.6 can follow directly into the transfer-level English 120 course. Those in the middle tier, GPA of 1.9 to 2.6. These were students that most often would have been placed into our English 90 sequence. So we're developing, you know, following the Chancellor's recommendations, a co-rec component to our transfer-level course. These co-recs are designed to give on-time remediation, in-class time on task for the students. So not just lecturing about reading comprehension or about essay structure, but actually working with the students on their writing right there in the class. For those in the bottom tier, again, the co-recs, but also we're trying to expand and develop our Writing Success Center right now to provide additional supports that really, again, targets those specific student skills. And, well, we hope to expand the Writing Success Center more broadly to try and reach all students, but strongly recommending that those with a lower GPA have additional supports in there. What you're taking, yes, ma'am?
Can you ask, so the co-rec, so that'll be mandatory?
Well, this is part of the issue with AB 705. You know, in terms of student placement, students are going to have the ability to sort of self-place. We cannot require that they take any particular class. All we can do is make recommendations based on high school GPA and some other variables, such as grades for particular high school English classes right now. So, you know, we're going to have to work very strongly with counseling to try and have solid recommendations to help students make the right choice for themselves. But yes, this is part of the law itself, is that we cannot require that they enroll in specific classes. Yes.
In the webinar, they said they could, that we, the webinar we watched, they said you could require the co-rec.
That's not my understanding from the Chancellor's directives at this moment. You know, I know that this is an issue that's being contested and debated at the state level, but my understanding of the guidelines at this point is that they're leaning towards allowing for that student selfplacement. And I can clarify that a little bit when I. Now, yeah, that does make it more complicated for us, yeah. What we're looking at right here is sort of our plan going into 2019, 2020. Right now, our regular trajectory for students, English 85, a more basic skills class, English 90, a college prep course, leading into English 120, our transfer-level course. Just to give you a sense, for students coming out of our local high schools, approximately 45% have been placed with our traditional testing methods into English 120, approximately 40, 45% into English 90, and then another 10, 15% into English 85. That's kind of the general numbers right there. But, you know, so from our high schools, kind of evenly split between that English 90 and English 120 level. So, you know, as we convert to the new regime in 2019, English 85 and English 90 will essentially be going away, despite the fact that it says one year to transfer. Chancellor's directives are suggesting that students have that right to enter directly into English 120. So, you know, we will hold on to a couple of the English 85 and 90 courses for different programmatic needs. We have students transitioning out of ESL courses into English courses. We have a couple of programs, such as Puente, that use the English 90, and we feel it's still very successful, and we're hoping that we can work that within the parameters of AB 705. But predominantly, those classes will be fading out. And so we'll be dividing the kind of section offerings that we have in between the regular transfer English 120 and converting those English 90 and English 85 courses into English 120 with co-rec support. Yes, ma'am?
How does the Writing Success Center, because anyone can use that, those services, right? So how does it look different for these students that that's added on as part of their plan?
Anyone can use it. At the same time, we will, we do have two non-credit courses, English 800 and English 801, which is a unit dedicated to the Writing Center. Now, the, yes, the students do not need to enroll in those enhanced non-credit courses to take advantage of the Writing Center supports. But in so doing, they have easier access to IAs, they don't have to worry so much about making appointments, and it allows for a little bit more dedicated kind of attention. So, you know, part of this will be a marketing push, is getting students to understand the advantages of the Writing Center and to build that into their schedule.
Okay, so it's a class, the Writing Support Center is actually a class they get credit for by using that service?
One can take the class, enroll in the English 800 unit, but one does not need to to take advantage of it. What the English 800 and 801 do is kind of provide streamlined access to it. And it is designed eventually to, the enhanced non-credit sequence is designed to develop a sort of certificate for completion if a student goes through several semesters of attendance in there. Long-term goals, we're hoping to convert some of this, some of the Writing Center supports into writing across the disciplines kind of emphasis, so that the students aren't just enrolling into these non-credit support classes just for English, but maybe for Health OX, for history, for CTE, you know, working with those programs to help devise writing supports specific to their disciplines. So that's kind of a year or two down the road, but that's hopefully what we're hoping to do as we make this adjustment as well. Because there are lots of programs out there that had English 90 as a prerequisite for their programs, and now that's essentially being removed. So how do we then offer some kind of supports for students that may not have had that college prep training going into other disciplines?
Thank you.
Just making sure I got all that one. So here's essentially our breakdown of courses. We have about 25 sections of English 120 going this semester, 20 of English 90, five of English 85. And so, you know, as we adjust, like I said, we'll have perhaps one section of English 85, a handful of English 90, but approximately 20 sections being converted into that English 120 with the co-rec support. So this is the plan as it is right now. We've got, you know, four teams targeting specific goals with regards to pathways and making those recommendations, the guided selfplacement recommendations to assist students. We're looking at our English 120 course outline of record. We're very confident and comfortable with our English 120 course, but still, we want to take a look at it and review it, and make sure it's in good shape going forward. We have another team working on that co-rec support development, and another team focusing on the Writing Center, and how we can make it work more effectively for this new regime coming in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now on to math.
Hi. So I feel like math is more complicated, because in math, we're going to have to end up tracking students when they first enter into their math path. They'll have to determine whether they're taking statistics, or they're studying some sort of field in business, science, technology, engineering, mathematics. And those are going to be two different paths in math. So it's really going to depend on what they're doing. We're also following the Chancellor's recommendations for placement, looking at not just their GPA, but also their performance in their math class, and giving them the placement of whichever is higher. And, yeah, let's take a look at it. I think this is a little easier to see. So right now, the math has a lot of options for the basic skills students. You can start at Math 55, you can take, which is our pre-algebra, you can take intermediate algebra and beginning algebra, either in one semester or in two semesters if you need a slower path. You know, we've been, we have an accelerated class, our Math 92 class, which is kind of new. We just have a lot of options for students, and part of this legislation is telling us we can't have that many options. So we're collapsing those classes down. We're actually going to retire our Complete 55 to 99 series and replace it with some different options. So on the right there, you can see if you're a statistics student, you have three possibilities there. If you need a support class, you can take your statistics with support. If you're ready, you can take statistics alone. If you feel like either you can't commit the time, to the extra time that that support class is going to take in one semester, or you just need more time to get ready for math, we will have an 83 option, which is giving you just the algebra you need to succeed in statistics. So in algebra, we learn a lot of things that don't apply to statistics, they're more for calculus students. So we're going to take all that out and just give you the algebra you need. That'll be optional, as Erin was explaining, we're not requiring students to take that. We'll be, hopefully, really working with our Counseling Department to help students decide what's the best choice for them to be successful. The BSTEM pathway was actually just completely rewritten in the past month, because we had this whole plan, and we thought that the Chancellor's office was going to go with that one-year path that the law says, but they released a memo in July that says, no, 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 not one year, one semester. So we've redone this a little. We're still going to offer two semesters of basic skills for students who need it, but again, that'll be an optional choice for students. So a lot of just making sure students know what is going to be expected of them. We'll also have the college algebra, which is our entry in the BSTEM pathway with support or without support. And then from there, most students would go into calculus or trigonometry, depending on their path. Questions on that?
I have a question. So if a student can self-place, could a student just sign up for calculus?
No. So the selfplacement, that's a really good question. The selfplacement is into the entry-level classes. So that's the ones in blue up there. So you can self-place into statistics or college algebra. If you have learned pre-calculus somewhere, there's a process to get you credit for that or get you acknowledgement for that, so you can get into calculus. But you wouldn't be able to come, just because you have a high school GPA, doesn't put you straight into calculus. Yes?
So those first two are not college-level classes?
Correct. In the 80s and in the 90s are basic skills classes.
And those are each a semester, so that's the one year?
Correct.
Okay, and that's the most that the law, correct, will allow?
Yes.
Before there?
Yes. So that's, that's as much as we can go.
Okay.
Yeah. And we'll still have our Learns program to support students who come to us, you know, who really need, you know, how to add, how to, you know, recognize positive and negative numbers, those sort of things. Those places, those supports will still be in place. They're not going away, are they?
So that's.
Please say they're not going away.
So based on the GPA, though, you'll be making the recommendations of, how will, I guess, how will students decide if they will take those?
Yeah, so what we're. Yeah, so, so what we're working on right now is we're developing flow charts or web questionnaires for students that will ask them, what's their last math class? What grade did they earn? So if you took an algebra two class or a math three class now, you're probably ready to go straight into college skills, right? It's college-level math. If you didn't, then we'll ask you about your GPA. And based on that, we'll give you a recommendation. We'll also probably end up asking you questions like, how confident are you in your math abilities? Because that really impacts what people need. And again, these will be recommendations, not requirements. Except for, there are some students we can require things for, which we probably will. We're still sorting through that right now.
One last question. So if, can a student choose to be in the eighty-five or ninety-five? They can?
Yes, that will be an option for students.
That's like in ten years' long time.
Yes, that's, yes, exactly. Yes, even if you were a great student, you might want a little review before we shove you into...
If I can follow up on that, you know, yes, the chancellor's office is making this sort of emphasis on straight into transfer, but we can still allow for those options. Whether students take those options or not, that's incumbent on the students. So this is why there still are a couple of those lingering prep courses available. And, you know, time will tell how our students' behavior, you know, kind of course, you know, responds to...
Correct.
You stated that, that there are still some students that you can require certain courses. What students are those?
So my understanding is students who either didn't graduate high school or have graduated high school more than ten years ago, we have some requirements. Also for students, not for statistics, but for BSTEM, students who have a GPA below a certain level, and I think it's like one point nine or two point three, I don't remember the number, you can require them to take the, you still have to allow them to enter into the college-level class, but you can require them to take it with support. But again, we'll go with whatever the current interpretation of the chancellor's, by the chancellor's office is when this actually goes into place, is what we'll use. We're not going to try to be more stringent than that.
Thank you.
And so I understand that you're not going to be doing assessment anymore?
Correct, there will be no, in math, there will be no placement tests.
Are there going to be like tests that a student could take privately to determine where they might be?
I mean, we can't stop them. My understanding of both the intent and the letter of the law is that even as guidance, they don't want us to use those tests? Do you want to, is that your understanding?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can address that.
Don't the high schools still do assessments?
Well, in the, in their, yes. This will not impact what the high schools are doing.
Right, but they'll, they'll have some idea of their skill level.
Right, well, and we'll have their high school grades to, to help advise them. Hopefully. I think I have one more skill and then Eric will actually fill in all the blanks. So basically, in math, I'm seeing a very drastic change in our number of sections. Currently, we usually offer between twenty-seven and thirty sections of basic skills mathematics and that's going to be decreasing drastically. So in fall nineteen, we will have much fewer, probably closer to between eight and twelve. It's very hard to nail this down right now. And then we'll probably have more sections of statistics and college algebra, some with support and some standalone. Other questions? I think that's my last slide. We're good?
Yeah, we can bring back some more questions here in a couple of minutes if anybody's interested. So I want to, I want to address a couple of, oh, I'm, yeah.
Just going to the start, it said that the students coming into the college, their high school GPA will be taken into consideration. What about students who gave GED as equivalence? Will that be taken into consideration and how will that be so?
So with the GED, I don't know exactly. I don't have a specific answer for that one off the top of my head. That's something that we're going to be working out this year, whether or not that would count as a high school graduation for these purposes. So to, so I don't have a specific answer to that question, but this also gets more generally to some of what we're grappling with right now as a college. So there's the legislation that was put into place. So AB seven oh five changes education code here in the state of California. Education code is not actually what we follow when we implement something locally. It's Title V regulations that we follow. So the regulations are written within the system and are adopted by the Board of Governors. At this point, we don't have those Title V regulations. What we have is our interpretive memos from the chancellor's office with what they intend to put into those regulations for the system. So there's a couple of, so it gets a little weedy here, but the order of precedence is that the law says one thing. The chancellor's office interpretation of the law is a little bit stricter than the actual letter of the law. And so we're still working with the system right now and developing the language and the regulations that will allow us to apply some of this. So we're going on the memos for right now. So back to one of the questions that Amy had asked also on this with the, us being able to require the supports. So you did hear yesterday that the answer to that is yes. And so it has been no and it has been yes, depending on which memo you looked at over the last six months. And that makes all the difference in the world. So a yes answer to that is a completely different ballgame than a no answer to that question. The problem that we have right now is that the chancellor's office is saying, yes, you will be able to require some levels of support, but we don't have the supporting regulation to tell us what the supports that we can require are and what the mechanism is for requiring it. So at this point, we aren't able to bake that into what we're doing in the system because we don't have the actual specifics of the regulations yet. The draft language of that will be coming, will be coming soon. The State Curriculum Committee that I sit on is the body that will be actually doing that language for the Title V regulations. So we'll be able to bring that back on campus soon as that's getting worked out. So there will be a point when something is allowed to be required, but we're not quite sure what that mechanism is and exactly what it is that we'll be able to require of them. But the indications are at this point that depending on the outcome of that regulatory change, we'll be able to require some supports for the students, but we just aren't sure exactly what that's going to be as long as we're preventing them from entering into that transfer level course in English and math. So, yeah, Amy?
Just wondering, to, as part of the implementation, is there professional development being planned to also change instruction? It wouldn't, you know, knowing that you're going to have greater variety of levels of students in the classes and how to differentiate in instruction and all of that, is that part of the plan?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, hu- huge part. And that's something that actually they've been working on in both departments for the last couple of years, even pre-AB seven oh five, looking at modifications to pedagogical approaches and practices in the classroom. So we have those baked into our annual plans already.
We've also already gotten approval to convert two of our classrooms into active learning rooms and we're sending a lot of math faculty to conferences this year looking at those exact issues. And then we're going to be asking for funding to bring professional development in the spring to our faculty and then look at ongoing learning community-type models for our faculty so that as we go through this very new, very different system in fall of nineteen, those faculty are working together to develop and find at other colleges best practices and implement those widely here. So that's a very large component.
Yeah, and we, we have funding that's already been set aside out of a couple of specific grants anticipating this. So guided pathways grant, our basic skills initiative grant and other funding sources that we've already anticipated that we'll need to be doing this, not just this year, but in an ongoing fashion. So we're in conversation about that.
Yeah, and if I can add, as you may have seen, once this gets implemented, there is a reporting period after two years. So we're going to have to be reporting back results. And in my vision, we're going to be doing a lot of figuring things out as we go along with this implementation. So this, it'll be really important in these first two years. It'll be a little bit messy at first as, as these adjustments come through and there will be ripple effects across campus. But, you know, a part of our mindset is also, okay, how do we adapt? How are we speaking to one another? How are we working to, you know, adjust to this new, you know, as I've been using the term regime, you know, to, to best serve all our students, especially since they will be coming in with very diverse skill levels upon entry?
Yeah, so just a couple of other things and then I can take some final questions from the board on this. So ESL is also included in the AB seven oh five legislation, but they're still working on exactly how this is going to function. The basics of this are that they expect us to be able to transition ESL students through to college level within three years. Again, we're not sure exactly, exactly what that means in terms of their entry level and what that's going to look like over that. So that work group at the state level is still conducting its work, so we don't have guidance on that yet. The implementation for ESL is fall of twenty twenty, not fall of twenty nineteen, which is the implementation deadline for that. So there's a lot of work to be done here on campus. We've got a lot of next steps. We've got to analyze student data. We're looking at that right now for what we're going to actually schedule in terms of classes for next fall because we're going to be, there's going to be some guesswork in this and there's going to be some data analysis in this. It will be as, as much art as it will be science in, in getting this together for, for next fall. But we have extremely capable people that are working on this internally, both with the faculty and also with our deans in these areas. Also, there's going to be a need to develop communication plans with the K-12. So there was a memo that we put out here internally to the all-staff email and I do believe the board members actually receive all-staff emails, so you may have seen that. If not, go back through and you can, you can look for it in your emails. An internal memo with our basic communication on what we're doing with AB seven oh five, so that has been distributed internally. So one of the, I, I just want to get, put this graphic up right before we, we end here with one final slide. This is, this is one of many charts that we've been working on to try and figure out what the impact of this is going to be on courses. This chart is just showing what's going to happen when we get rid of those math courses. This is just the course effect. We've got a whole other one that shows what happens to the programs. We have a whole other one that shows what the ripple effect is on, on other areas of campus. So, you know, because a little bug went kachoo, I think is the story. You know, we're, we're getting, we're getting this rippling out quite, quite a ways here. So you can see that this is a pretty complicated thing that we're dealing with here and this is going to be taking a great deal of our bandwidth this year. The good thing with all of this, though, is we go into this and the key takeaways for you as a board, just please be assured that the, that the folks that we have here working on campus doing this work are the best people in the state to be doing this work. We have extraordinary faculty in both the math and the English departments that are on top of this, that are all over this, that are going to do this and they're going to serve our students incredibly well going forward in this. We have a fantastic support staff and administrative staff that's working with the faculty on this too. We've got this, we're on top of it. Key takeaways that I have here for you. First off, Napa Valley College is responding vigorously and fully to the requirements of the law. Second, we are currently developing new and modifying existing academic support and course co-requisits to support students in their new placements. We are using the default placement rules for students, so that's another question that I know came through the CCLC. We are using the default placement rules. We will be greatly expanding the number of transfer-level English and math sections offered in fall of twenty nineteen as we indicated earlier. Again, we don't know exactly what greatly means at this point, but we're working on it and we're going to get it figured out. We are developing guided and guided self-placement materials for students. I've seen the drafts of those, they're pretty cool. I love decision charts. And this, and math has already developed a pretty good one for one of their pathways that I've seen at, at this point. So that work is being done, but we're also working with counseling on this. So we have meetings coming up this, in this coming week where counselors and the, and the faculty in these departments are going to be getting together to work together to talk about how it is that this is going to be communicated to students and how students will be guided in their placement here. And then finally, yes, we are actively supporting professional development for faculty involved in these programs. We anticipated this some time ago and this is already baked into this year's budget and will continue to be baked into our budgets in the, in the coming years. We have a lot of resources that we've been able to leverage for this and we will make sure that the faculty have exactly what they need to have to be able to do the work and to support our students as we move forward into the future with these changes that are pretty significant here for the California Community College system. So with that, are there any final questions that we can address for you as a board?
Yeah. So I, you answered partially one of the questions I had about how are we paying for it all? And you were talking about grants and various things. Do you see a timeline? Do you see a place where you're going to know if that does cover all of the needs? What are the needs at this point as far as staffing and, and professional development cost? All of those kind of things that would come before us at some point in time if necessary?
Yeah, so, so this is going to be an ongoing, an ongoing conversation that we're going to have to be doing every single year as we're going through this and looking at the phases of implementation. We've got a different thing in front of us for fall of nineteen and spring of twenty than what we're going to have in the following year. We're going to have a transition period where we're actually running two systems simultaneously in some cases. So the, the, the answer is, yeah, we've got some special funding that we're able to apply to these initial stages here this year. The goal, though, is to, is to build that into the ongoing budgets for these areas going forward with whatever ends up being the ongoing, long-term needs for staffing, for equipment, for facilities, things of that sort. But you'll be seeing plenty of things coming across through the, through the budget and through our, and through purchasing and contracts and all sorts of other stuff that will be coming through the board, both this year but in years to come that are related to this effort that we're working with.
And you mentioned two systems that will be running simultaneously. So is there an overlap time where we're still doing assessments and not doing assessments?
So assessments, no. So with assessments, we are only authorized in the state of California to use an assessment instrument that has been authorized by the Board of Governors. The Board of Governors is declining to authorize any assessment instrument. So there will effectively be no assessment instrument that's legal in the state of California for the community college system. So not for assessments, but we have students that are currently in a basic skills pathway or they are currently, you know, moving through a sequence. So there's going to be some transition time in fall where they're sequencing out of the old one and into the new one. And so we may have, you know, math ninety-four is being, is a good example of that that I know Shawna has brought up before. So the intermediate, the current intermediate algebra course, we will still have students that are actually actively enrolled in that at the same time as we're implementing the new curriculum. So there's going to be some overlap. So it's going to take a couple of years, if not more, to shake out in terms of what, of what this is going to be, what we're going to need long-term support. But again, the faculty in this, in these areas and the deans that are working with them in these areas are really good at asking for things and really good at articulating exactly what the needs are. And I mean that affectionately, I really do. Yeah, there, the, the, the needs will be clear and they will be clearly articulated and they will absolutely be supported and brought through as the district can support them moving it through. But yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. Are there any other questions?
I just had a quick question on how is this going to impact or what are some of the impacts on K through twelve? Is it going to force the high schools to have to start working more with the students to help out? Or are we just kind of like a catch-all and then we're going to be working through the placement side of it?
Yeah, so I've, I've, I've already had some informal conversations with the English faculty at our, at our local high schools on this and heard some surprise from them that we were getting ready to do what we were getting ready to do. We started great conversations last year, actually, with them, with, both Shawna and Erin were involved in direct conversations where we got them together up at the Upper Valley Campus last year with their high school counterparts. We're going to do something similar again this year as we get a little bit clearer what we're going to be doing going forward with the placement and what the curricular changes are going to be to talk to them about this. But it's going to require a lot of effort that's consistent and collaborative between the K-12 system and what we're doing to ensure that students are really getting adequately prepared there and that we understand what we're getting when we get them here.
Trustee Paltini.
Yeah. If I could add into that, you know, the, the K-12 instructors, they have their own curricular mandates. So even though there might be good intentions about how this might, you know, affect the, the student readiness coming out, you know, there's a little bit of a disconnect there as well.
Kind of what I was seeing is the problem is it seems like this bill would need some synergy with K through twelve.
Trustee Paltini.
As a six-year student who's, who's taken math, do I have to go back to it before I get my degree?
You'll get the letter in the mail soon. If you previously completed, you've, you're, you're good.
All right, thank you.
Trustee Baker.
This is kind of, sort of dovetailing off of what Kyle asked. And this, this sounds a little reminiscent of like how the Common Core thing turned everything upside down with K-12. And the good thing with that is that California was not the first to adopt California, Common Core. Are there other states that are doing similar changes that we are being able to?
So we, we're blaming Bob that this happened. So if you want to answer that one briefly?
Thank you. Yeah, funny you should mention that. I came here, Bob Vander Velde Dean for Social Science and Science, Math and Engineering. I came here a year and a quarter ago from the state of Florida, which went through this very same convulsion several years ago with Senate Bill seventeen twenty-nine, the Florida equivalent of AB seven oh five. And it is a big change and for me, it's deja vu all over again. The, the Florida effort came from a little different place and not quite as pleasant a place as California because it was an effort about saying, y'all are spending too much on remedial education for stuff that should be done at K-12. And so the cutout of developmental education was then accompanied by budget cuts. The California effort comes from a different place. The California effort comes from a different place. It comes from a place of, "We have concerns about equity. We have concerns about whether placement is underplacing some students and overplacing others." And so, fixing something that nationally is broken, but in a different way and from a little different perspective. There is an endpoint. Eventually, all of these curricular changes do come to pass and all of this levels out. But, I can tell you that at least for the next two to three years, we will see student enrollment patterns shift in ways that our crystal ball is very fuzzy about right now. But, it will eventually settle out, and we will eventually, I believe through this initiative, get our students through a little bit quicker without taking additional courses and putting them in those paths, particularly when we talk about math, that getting students to take the right math is really important. And so, getting based upon their career objectives and based upon the direction that they want to go on transfer, making sure that they are in that right sequence that is abbreviated for those that needed to be abbreviated and a little bit more support for those who need support. And I think that we will, we have a very good team in place, as Vice President Shearer mentioned, to be able to do just that.
Thank you. Trustee Martinson.
Just a comment and then a question. And actually, I was hoping Trustee Iverson would stick around for this because I was actually been thinking that I think there's a lot to learn from the K through 12 system just because for many years we've been dealing with No Child Left Behind and the whole accountability movement and dealing with so many different levels in a classroom. And I feel like a lot of the conversations we're having now, we've been having for a long time at that level, just looking at data and multi-level systems of support and all of that. So, I think maybe some good collaboration and maybe trainings, going to similar trainings would be really good. But, the question was, they asked this, we were supposed to ask this in the webinar, so I'm asking it. And I don't expect you to have it offhand, but if we could just get it, it was to kind of figure out where our baseline's at. So, later, we do look at evaluation a year or two from now. It said, "Find out what percent of students are taking transfer-level English and math now and what is our one-year completion rate?" And I tried to find that, I couldn't find it. So, I don't know if you can point me where to go or if that, we could find that out. But, that's what they told us to ask you, so I'm asking.
Yeah, so Aaron had talked about what the current placement rate is right now. The one-year success rate, that's information that we can pull off of it. I do believe that that's information that we have. That is our remedial progress rate that you would see as part of our scorecard report that Robin Warrenall, that Dr. Warrenall brings to this board every year. So, that would be associated with the remedial progress rate. So, if you look for that, that data on the website, it would be there. I don't, you're right, I don't have it off the top of my head, but that's data that's already tracked.
And we already, we heard tonight the placement rates, the current placement?
So, right now, so Aaron, I'm going to paraphrase here. You said about 40% of the students are currently placing into English 120?
Between nine, English nine and English 120, it's fairly evenly split. About 45% of our high schools go either track English 120 or math, and the rest are in English.
And then, yeah, and then the rest are, and with math, the placement rates are lower than they are in English. So, those, the-
Not everybody takes the placement test in math.
Yeah, so it's a little, yeah, yeah. So, we've been going through this for the last year with the data.
What was it in math?
I don't have the figure off the top of my head.
It's higher, but not everybody takes the placement test in math. If you succeed in Algebra II in high school, you don't take a placement test.
No, I mean that they're placed in college-level math.
Then they go straight to college-level. So, we don't even-
They're not placed, they simply start at.
They don't take a placement test, yeah.
Okay, but somehow we can find out what percent are taking college-level math?
Yeah, we do have all of that, yeah. That's all data that's at our fingertips that we can report back. If the board is interested in having that, we'd be happy to do so.
I think, if I could, a surrogate for that might be looking at the number of sections that we offer, and you had data on the charts of that, that we're offering at that first level, you know, 27 or so basic skills sections compared to the number of 20 or so in 106 and 232 together. Yeah, so, so we're in that, those similar numbers. And those are consistent with national numbers of placement and both state and national numbers.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
All right. You're very welcome.
That was a great presentation and a lot of good detail. Look forward to the updates.
I promise to not always pull you that far into the weeds. Thank you, Profs, for coming in. Nice job, you guys, yeah.
All right, well, let's take a short break here and then we'll get into our consent calendar. I would say eight o'clock, but if we can get back sooner, that would be good, too.
There should be a, there's a lever, you got it?
Kyle doesn't think K through 12 teachers are doing anything, trying to help students. We're just lacking off and just dumping them to the community college.
Carol, text me, oh, my God.
Yeah, that one, that one. Did you plant that question?
I swear to God, I didn't.
I'm seeing everybody and their intentions, and I'm like, oh, my God.
Yeah, right, I know, I brought it with-
That's, we're going to have a hurricane, right?
Hurricane, yeah.
I used to think when you're texting me, you're texting me from close section.
From where?
Close section, I thought you were texting me.
No, that's my first time in there.
Oh, okay, I did hear it all this time. I feel like someone, Carol Lee used to text me this problem.
I didn't know that, now I'm jealous. But, that was our special.
Wow. Actually, would she text me? No, she would text me, I never got to her. But, thank God, I didn't, I wasn't just- A little bit, a little bit, not quite.
Okay, wait, my-
So, what I was going to say is-
Hello?
We can, or we don't have to meet. Eric, we had a discussion, a justification.
Okay.
And then it gets evaluated.
Okay.
So-
By the-
Him.
Oh, by him, not by the, okay.
Yeah, because we were talking about some going up.
Within, you mean across the division?
Yeah, and how do we want that process? We still haven't identified what the criteria is for them to evaluate by, so it's fine, just I think the things are particularly fine. We had a master sheet of five years of the caps, and so I checked it, and I still had it like 40, so I-
Right, is if they get a strike, they need to.
Even after that analysis, I kept it.
Yeah, no, it's never budged.
No, so that's why-
Really, it's for all community colleges in California.
Then that is how he's made some changes.
And I could, and I think for those, especially for anything non-European or, again, modern because you have a whole kind of overlay of criticism, and I just think an argument could be made here, there's some background. So, I, so-
Do you want to do it by course or overall?
Oh, by course. The surveys can stay 40.
Okay, so-
Especially if I'm down to five sections now. It'll be interesting to see what the caps do, I mean, what the limits do. I wanted you to know that I am, I think I told you this, I was, I'm going to add distance, you know, online and hybrid to all of them that don't have.
When do you want to review?
Well, I was looking for some guidance on like what I was supposed to put in there, but it looks like it hasn't just at all. I'll just put kind of boilerplate in. And I had asked Lisa-
For a master's first college.
As soon as the spring, and she was-
I don't know what his college was.
And so, and I don't need to make that, I don't need to take that risk. We can just do five sections face-to-face, and then I might, however, not make an argument.
I don't know what his, but you should always apply because they've got loads of-
Online to see how it does. I just, I think it will do fine.
Yeah, and I think so, but then, I think we're going to have, we'll already be two semesters in with the evaluation process, and then you should-
Thank you. So, I'm, so I'm, I've reached out to Terry, I was going to say there'll be two possible sections for you, so I reached out to Terry, yes, she can do one out. I'm really starting to realize. Seven. But, maybe that was really, maybe, I mean, I don't know, but-
I took one A in class in four years of college. It's tough, it is tough. And maybe it's even, you know, I mean, we can even try to narrow it down by ten.
Well, I just wonder if we, so, because this is, I mean, it doesn't have to be, it could be one of the surveys, and I, my gut says give it a survey.
Yeah, yeah.
But, it's more information, you know, if you can bear with me and let us see how that plays out and then, and then, you know, in another, by fall of 19, I'm teaching full-time, I'm probably teaching four sections.
Yeah, it's, I think Lisa's just getting her feet wet and just trying to have her figure out the whole curriculum thing. And as long as all curriculum is submitted, kind of targeted, it's by the content, so if we could try to, you know, if you wanted, you want, all of these are going to be updated to hybrid, 50%, then there's a chance that they can get in there.
Well, I won't push it too hard.
At least on the agenda.
Okay, yes. And the other thing being, do, well, okay, scratch. So, I will set up a justification for lowering the caps in those selected courses across the board. And then, and then, because I thought, it's not a number that goes in the core, but I won't worry about that right now.
It will, I think it will, but then what?
But, that will change later, or it becomes an automatic update, I don't have to trigger it.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll work with, yeah, she'll just do it because, once he approves it, then it will be him, I would just have to follow and make sure that caps change.
So, it doesn't become a course in the work log?
Yeah, because I just went to Catherine after our meeting with Janet, and said, "Can you change the title?" She said, "Some of those are this way." He actually wanted the title changed to "Just Containment Eight," and so she made that change. And then, any courses that are with modified, so automatically update because they'll be modified.
But, we had complete misalignment because, like, history changed its, the name of its survey, and there was no way of knowing, and so it sat out of date.
Yeah, yeah, so then I'll just cancel that meeting.
Okay, that's fine, and I appreciate you advocating, I really appreciate that it's going to be, you know-
It was a good discussion, briefly, because we mostly were looking at the full-time faculty hires and talking about that.
Oh, you-
Yeah, and so, and then a lot of talk about that there's a process, but yet we didn't drill down like what's the criteria, but it was fine because it's kind of on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I was going to say, my instinct would be that there isn't going to be a kind one-size-fits-all.
Well, so what, let us all know, is that the ramifications that we all start making changes like that, what it does overall, so he was, he was kind of saying, "How you can do this, but keep in mind what happens." Anyway.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Thanks. Okay, have a good night. See you later.
And so, with Eric, break open, break open, she got the money.
Everything collapsed and everything was, those students were grossed. That affects what, what-
So, other grants that we get are based on some of those numbers, so others that could be affected that aren't portion-based, but yeah, so.
Okay, let's go. All right, let's, let's go, board. Okay, everybody's back except Ron. Oh, Kyle's not back, oh, Kyle's back. Who am I missing? Oh, Prozada. Ron, Prozada. Oh, there she is. It's so quiet. All right, I will go on to approving consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, Baldini Rios?
By consent, you don't really need-
Oh, consent, right, sorry.
Thanks, Baldini.
Yeah, you drew us off sides.
Throwing the bait out there and you took it.
We were drawn off sides. All right, seeing no changes, objections, consent calendar approved. All right. And now we move to public hearing 13.1. I will open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Anybody wish to speak on the public hearing for Napa Valley CCD 2018-2019 adoption of final budget? Hearing none, public hearing closed. All right, and moving along, we go to the final budget and Mr. Parker.
Oh, no, I can, if I can do it, I'll do it. Okay, thank you. So, what you're seeing tonight is there are very few changes, actually only two changes to this final budget from the budget that you approved, the tentative budget that you approved at the June board meeting. And so, this budget is the result of work of the Planning and Budget Committee. We had the tentative budget started under the members of the Planning- We had the tentative budget started under the members of the Planning and Budget Committee in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. We have had a few changes in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. What you see on the screen are the members of the current members of the Planning and Budget Committee. And I do want to thank our former faculty co-chair, Maria Biddenbach, who remains on the Planning and Budget Committee for her work on the establishment of the, of the eighteen nineteen tentative budget. And now we're closing out with the final budget and Stephen Belasi has taken over as the faculty co-chair. This is the updated timeline. So this takes us from when the tentative budget was presented to the campus community in May. And we pick up in the fall with the final budget being presented to the Planning and Budget Committee on August thirty first. Final budget was presented to the campus community on September fourth. And thank you to the members of the Board of Trustees who were able to join the campus community at that meeting. We were planning to present the final budget to the Audit and Finance Committee at a meeting that was scheduled for last Thursday. But unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, we were not able to hold that meeting. Presentation of the final budget to the Audit and Finance Committee is not required. It's something that we have been doing recently. But then tonight, we're presenting the final budget to you at this evening's meeting. Now, for those of you who were at the campus forum, this is a new slide. And this is information taken from the Introduction to Fiscal Responsibilities from the Community College League of California. And what you see here are seven questions or seven areas that the CCLC says you should be. These are the questions you should be asking. And these are the things you should be looking at. So for example, how does the budget support the vision, mission, and goals of the college? And you will see in an upcoming slide that this budget is based or tied to the strategic initiatives that are linked to the vision of, the mission and goals, I should say, of the college. Are the assumptions used to build this budget still valid? And you'll see that we've made a couple of changes since the tentative budget, based on more recent information about our assumptions. Is the budget balanced? And the answer is yes. Are there significant changes from last year? And we will be discussing those changes, the requests that came through the planning and budget process. What is the projected ending balance and is it realistic? And you'll see that we will be discussing ending balances. How large are the reserves? Same conversation. And then finally, if new programs are proposed, what new personnel are needed? And what are the facilities, maintenance, and equipment needs? And so you'll see that we're not looking at in particular new programs. There are new initiatives, new strategic initiatives that are included in this budget. And included in this budget are any staffing requirements related to those. And you will see that we'll, we'll also be talking about ongoing funding for maintenance and equipment needs. And also some additional funding coming in for capital improvements. So these are the five strategic initiatives or planning priorities that you approved last year and that are used as the basis for this budget and will continue into the next two planning and budget cycles. What you're seeing today in this presentation is information about the General Fund Unrestricted and General Fund Restricted. We also have our Capital Outlay Projects Fund, Child Development Fund, Post Retirement Benefits Fund, Debt Service Associated Student Body and Student Rep Fee. Those are included in the overall budget packet that is also included in tonight's board packet. And those are funds that are typically self-balancing. You know, we only spend the amount of money that we would have available for capital outlay projects. And we're actually holding that capital outlay project money for potential future needs. Child Development Fund, Post Retirement Benefit Funds, those are all funds that are restricted in their use. Also, the auxiliary organization budgets, those component budgets. And that's the District Auxiliary Services Foundation and the Viticulture and Winery Technology Foundation. Those budgets are developed by the foundation boards and those are not included in tonight's presentation. So in terms of our assumptions, revenue assumptions, we assumed that there would be a cost of living increase of one point five percent for federal and state funds, so those restricted funds. In terms of our local revenue and our, what we used to call apportionment or state revenue. We have shifted, as we've talked about before, from being a state apportionment district or from state apportionment funding to community-supported funding for the General Fund Unrestricted. Now, you've seen this slide before, but we've made a few changes to make it more relevant to Napa Valley College itself. So what is the difference between an apportionment district and a community-supported district? So as we've discussed before, the state determines what our total computational revenue will be for the number of students that we serve. Now, the state has changed the way they do that computation. There's a new student-centered funding formula that's in place. But it's still based on the number of students that you serve. So the state says, based on that funding formula, based on the number of students that you serve or have historically served, this is the amount of money that it will take to operate your district. Then the state looks at three sources of revenue to cover. It looks at your student enrollment fees locally, your local property taxes. And then it says, are those sufficient? And if they're not, the state will apportion additional funds to make up the difference for total computational revenue. Now, if we look at Napa Valley College in sixteen seventeen, our total computational revenue was thirty point seven million dollars. We collected two point two million dollars in enrollment fees and received twenty seven point eight million dollars in property taxes. So those two numbers together fell short of total computational revenue by seven hundred thousand dollars. And so we received, received apportionment from the state of seven hundred thousand dollars. Looking at the budget that we're, that, that you're reviewing tonight, our twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget. According to the state, our total computational revenue is thirty two point seven million dollars. We're projected to collect approximately two point five million in enrollment fees. And will be receiving thirty two, projected to receive thirty two point five million in property tax revenue. Those numbers exceed our total computational revenue. So the state will not apportion any funds to NVC. And we will keep the amount by which our fees and taxes exceed that total computational revenue. And for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, that's two point three million dollars. Yes?
So I remember the tentative budget, the one for the audit committee. I thought there was a number of five hundred thousand that was thrown out that we were going to be going over.
So the five hundred thousand, so there has been a change since then. And the five hundred, the two point three million is the cumulative effect of where we were last year and where we are this year. So you'll see in an upcoming slide, we've added about one point two million in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget. And about seven hundred thousand of that is an increase from the tentative budget to the final budget.
I think it might be a good idea if we just go through the full presentation because I know it's a lot of information. And like you said, some of the stuff that we might ask could be coming up later.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so trying to dispel a couple of myths about what it means to be a community-supported district. So the first one is, I have heard people say, now that Napa Valley College is a community-supported district, we don't need to worry, we don't need to follow the chancellor's office's rules and regulations. I think you said that, yeah. I, I wish that was true, but it's not. So we are still subject to requirements of the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office, including but not limited to compliance with the fifty percent law. We are required to do our management information system reporting. We are required to comply with faculty, faculty obligation numbers or our faculty fund. We have to submit our curriculum through the curriculum approval process. And we are also obviously required to maintain accreditation. So being community-supported does not absolve us from any of those requirements. The other thing that I've heard from at least one person in this room is community-supported districts have lots of extra money. What are we going to do with all that extra money? Well, yes, we do have two point three million dollars. Looking at this year, our property taxes and our, our enrollment fees exceed our total computational revenue by two point three million. But we're just starting out compared to other community-supported districts. College of Marin has thirty three point five million in excess property tax revenue. Miracosta College in Southern California has forty eight point seven million in excess. San Jose Evergreen has thirty five point four. San Mateo has sixty three point eight million in excess property tax revenue. Now, Sierra College is like us. They just became community-supported and so they're at two point three as well. Here's the big winner. South Orange Community College District has a hundred and one point five million dollars in excess property tax revenue. And West Valley Mission has fifty nine million in excess property tax revenue. So while we do, it's, it's great to be community-supported, don't get me wrong. It's, it's a great place to be. But we're not exactly where some of these other districts who have been entrenched in community support for years are at this point. The other thing about this, community-supported districts have lots of extra money. If we look at the increase in excess property tax revenue comparing this year to last year, it increased by one point four million dollars. But we took a hit in physical plant and instructional support money this year. That was decreased by three hundred and seven thousand dollars. And that had nothing to do with us being community-supported. It's just a shifting of funds at the state chancellor's office. All districts were reduced in, in the amount of money that they got for physical plant and instructional support. So for this year, our net increase is basically one point one million. If you, if you also factor in the fact that our decrease in physical plant and instructional support comparing last year to the previous year, that was a decrease of five hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. So these are things that we need to pick up from all of that extra money that we're getting. And you'll see in a minute that that's one of the things that we're going to do. The one change that you'll see from the tentative budget to the final budget. And here it is. So looking at the tentative budget, compared to the tentative budget, our projected property tax revenue has increased by six hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. So Trusty Martenson, that's that five hundred versus the one point one that we're looking at right now. We are proposing, the Planning and Budget Committee proposed, the campus community reviewed, and we submitted to Dr. Kraft for his presentation tonight, that we take that money and use it to increase the amount of money that we have for capital outlay. And you'll see as we talk about the budget requests that came in, why we're doing that. So if you remember, this is from the tentative budget, our total requests for additional funding were six point two million dollars. And that reflects both strategic initiatives and what we call operational continuance. So strategic initiative says, we have those five strategic priorities. I want to do something that links to one of those five. And those requests, those funding requests were based on those strategic initiatives. We also had what we called operational continuance, which is saying, I'm already doing it. I want to keep doing it. It's good for the college for us to keep doing it. But it costs a little more today than it did yesterday to do that. And so those are the operational continuance requests. So a total of six point two million. We said that we had about one point two million dollars available in general fund unrestricted funds to distribute. That's a combination of increases, increased revenue in the eighteen nineteen budget year as well as some one-time events that took place in seventeen eighteen that now made funds available in eighteen nineteen. So of those six point two million in requests, about one point one million of them are things that could be funded through restricted funds. So for example, as Eric mentioned, guided pathways funds, basic skills funds. We have triple S P funds that we could use for some of these initiatives. Facility improvements, we had one point four million dollars worth of requests in facilities improvements. And at the time of the tentative budget, we set those aside because we were considering a potential general obligation bond measure in the fall. We know now that that is not going to happen in fall of twenty eighteen. And so that's where the application of the additional funds to capital outlay comes into play. We're going through the process of reviewing those one point four million dollars in facility improvement requests to prioritize them and apply some of those additional funds to moving forward with some of those facility improvement requests. Now, again, of the six point two million, there were about six hundred thousand dollars of requests that were things that were already in the budget. You know, I need twenty thousand dollars in supply money in order to continue my program. Well, the department already had twenty thousand dollars in supply money. So that really wasn't a request for additional funds. And then finally, deferred to future years was about one point nine million dollars. And when we say deferred to future years, we asked units to look at this planning and budget process as a three-year process. Because remember, our strategic initiatives are three-year strategic initiatives. And so there were things in unit plans that build on activities that we'll be undertaking in eighteen nineteen. There are things that we had to accomplish the first piece in eighteen nineteen in order to move into the second piece. And so this one point nine million reflects things that will be rolled over into the budgeting process for nineteen twenty and for twenty twenty one as part of years two and three of those strategic initiatives. So these are the funding priorities that came through from the various areas. And remember, units present their, they prepare their, their unit plans based on guidance that they get from their area council. And so we have four area councils. We have academic affairs, student affairs, administrative services, and the president's area. And so what you see here are the funding priorities that, that came from the Office of Academic Affairs and that were included in this year's budget, the eighteen nineteen budget. So we have strategic initiatives to prepare for implementation of AB seven oh five. I'm not sure what that is, but. And other student success initiatives. Targeted outreach to enhance educational and career pathways and improve partnerships with K-12. An increase in the hourly rate to NVSS and PSI for DSPS instruction. So NVSS is Napa Valley Support Services. PSI is Products and Services Incorporated. Of course, DSPS is our disability support programs and services. And so we contract, and we're going to hear about that again in a minute. We contract with NVSS and PSI to provide instruction to adults with disabilities here in Napa County. We had been paying them the same rate per hour, per student for easily eight years, if not longer. And so they had requested an increase, a modest increase of fifty cents an hour. We increased it by twenty five cents an hour, but that's the increase that's included in the budget. There are initiatives for implementation of guided pathways work, enhanced funding for instructional supplies and materials, funds to increase hours for instructional assistance in key programs, expanding tutoring and academic support, initiatives to increase the educational and civic connection of the college, and institutionalization of the Napa CPR program. We've been offering through our health occupations programs CPR training. So it's kind of been under the radar. And this is to institutionalize that, to. And this is to institutionalize that, to make that more evident to the community and to provide more of those services. If we look at the Office of Student Affairs, this is, the first one is an example of operational continuance. There was an increase in eMozia consortium fees in order to continue operating a eMozia program, we needed to increase those fees. We're implementing a new document imaging system. Now this, while it falls under the Office of Student Affairs in this budget, because that's where it will start, this is really a district-wide initiative. Now, we're doing it for a couple of reasons. Probably the most important is that the current imaging system that we're using, which is primarily used in admissions and records and financial aid, is no longer supported by the vendor. And so we need to move to a new system. But by moving to a new system and utilizing funds that are available through triple SP and some other areas, we will get improved service, we'll be able to do a better job of imaging for admissions and records and financial aid. And then, as phase two, it will roll out to other areas of campus, to the Office of Human Resources, to the Business and Finance Office, to other parts of campus. We're also looking at implementing a student success early alert and intervention system. And there are two new hires in this area, a Director of International Students and a Dean of Student Affairs. If we look at the Office of Administrative Services, if you visit the Business and Finance Office, you will see that we are in the process of reorganizing the space in the Business and Finance Office to help it function better. We're also hiring an additional custodian. As Matt Christensen would say, this is something that pays for itself because we're reducing the number of hourly custodians by hiring an additional custodian. We're also looking at reorganizing the facilities department to help it function more effectively. We've also set aside some funds, a modest number of dollars, actually 10,000 for computers and 10,000 for furniture. But these are funds to purchase computers and furniture for new office spaces. So if you hire, if there's a new hire, someone who is not replacing anyone in existing position, we need, that person needs a computer and they need a desk. And so this is dedicating funds to allow us to do that. And then finally, improving and increasing our network connection at the American Canyon High School classrooms. As we utilize those classrooms more frequently and continue to increase utilization of those classrooms, we need to improve network connections to support the instructional program. In the president's area, the president's office, it's funding for the Board of Trustees election, and then professional development opportunities for the Board of Trustees and the staff in the president's office. The Office of Institutional Advancement requested funding for a Salesforce consultant. They are implementing a Salesforce customer relationship management system and just need a few extra hours of consulting to bring that up. And the Office of Human Resources, additional funding for Title IX coordination and investigations, a higher volume copier, which was actually installed on Tuesday, and then consulting for health benefits. And then finally, in research planning and institutional effectiveness, we increased their .5 research analyst to 1.0. So what are the new positions in the budget? Well, there's the Director of International Students, a Dean of Student Affairs, we have our additional custodian, we have additional time for instructional assistance, as well as additional positions for instructional assistance in key areas, and then our increase of the .5 research analyst to 1.0. Other things that are included in this budget, remember, we've talked about our scheduled maintenance and capital improvements. Our scheduled maintenance and capital improvement includes our roof replacements per our replacement schedule, and that was part of the facilities master plan that you adopted. We will be doing classroom upgrades. And as I said earlier, we're reviewing the facility requests that were submitted as part of the unit plan process to start addressing some of those requests. In terms of equipment purchases and replacements, I guess my time's up. In terms of equipment replacements, we have the continuation of our computer replacements per our refresh program. Again, that was something that you saw in the technology plan. And then a continuation of classroom equipment upgrades also per the refresh program. Looking at salaries and benefits as a percentage of budgeted expenditures. So what, how much of our budget, if we look at our total expenditures, how much of our budget goes to salaries and benefits? In general fund unrestricted, it's 77%. And in general fund restricted, it's 63%. Now, our guidance or information from the CCLC, there are actually three, only two are listed here, and I would be remiss if I didn't point out that trustee Martenson pointed out something that's listed on page 50 of one of these. So if you look at page, so, the CCLC trustee handbook says, at least 80% or more of the budget goes to wages, salaries, and benefits. In the CCLC Introduction to Fiscal Responsibilities, there are two statements. The one that you see here is on page 31, which says, salaries and benefits comprise by far the largest portion of the budget, at least 85% or more. Now, that doesn't mean that the CCLC is saying it should be 85%. That's just, they're saying, you can expect, you're probably going to see it be about 85%. A little further back in that intro to fiscal responsibilities, they make the statement the percent total salaries and benefits of the total budget. The percent should be between 80 and 90%. The state average is approximately 85%. So that's where the 85% comes from. So our percentages in both cases, general fund unrestricted and general fund restricted, are below the 80%, 80 to 90% that is stated in the CCLC Intro to Fiscal Responsibilities. So now, looking at the budget, you see here that our local income, so you see tentative budget compared to final budget here. The only change in revenue or income is that increase of $653,000 in local income, and that's reflecting the forecasted increase in property taxes. In expenditures, we are not projecting any change from tentative to final budget in salaries and employee benefits. And we'll talk in a minute. What you see here in terms of salaries are negotiated increases with our faculty are included in here. We are in year three of those increases. Forecasted increases for classified employees are also set aside in here. And employee benefits, the most significant increases are in STIRS and PIRS, and that's those increased rates that we will be paying. We're not showing any change between tentative and final budget in books and supplies and in other operating expenses. But I do want to point out, if you look at things like computer software and books, you'll see that our final budget for 1718 was about 1.2 million. It goes up to 1.4. And that reflects some of those increases. That's more than a cost of living increase that reflects some of those increases that were requested. We also see a significant increase from final budget of last year to final budget of this year in instructional supplies and materials, and those are those requests that came through the planning and budget process. I do want to point out, there's, trustee Martenson had indicated that a member of the public was asking about the line in other operating expenses, asking about the line other personal services. What exactly does that mean? And so other personal services are a rather large grouping of small items due to the way that the state classifies those expenditures. But some examples of what is in other personal services are things like models for our art classes. Those are considered other personal services. Piano tuners, and it's not all about, I see Michelle Mono isn't here anymore, it's not all about arts and humanities, but piano tuners for the Performing Arts Center. Title IX investigation services would be included here. Writers' conference expenditures for people who read the manuscripts and people who do the catering services for the events. Consulting services are included in here. Guest speakers in classes. Architect services, for example, we use some architectural services to prepare the facilities master plan. Employment agencies, if we use temporary employees, those are included here. But the lion's share of what's in here reflects the payments that we make to Napa Valley Support Services and Products and Services Incorporated for our DSPS instruction. That amounts to about $400,000 of what's in this line item. And those are contracts that you approve, you approved those contracts for the new fiscal year at the July board meeting. In terms of, here's the only change in expenditures in the general fund unrestricted budget, and that's adding that $653,000 in additional revenue to the capital outlay budget to help us address some of those capital improvement requests that came through the planning and budget process. So we are, you'll see that our increase and decrease in our fund balance is again zero. So we are proposing a balanced budget, tentative and final. And you'll see that in terms of our uncommitted fund balance, in our 1718 budget, it was 14% of the total expenditures. In 1819, both the tentative and the final budget, it's 13%. Now, the reason for that, and we've discussed this before, and it was part of our three-year projection upon which we based the tentative and final budgets, is that we are currently maintaining our fund, uncommitted fund balance as we move forward. We're not looking to add to it. As we devote dollars to faculty compensation and classified compensation recommendations that have come out of the classification and compensation study. Now, we did set a long-range goal, so five years from now, to increase that to 15%. And so as we look to future years, we'll be looking to add to that. But the fact that we're at 13% this year and we were at 14% last year just reflects the fact that we're not increasing it, but expenditures are increasing. We are still well above the state's mandate of 5%, and we are also above our self-imposed mandate of 12% as it currently stands. Looking at general fund restricted, we are projecting those 1.5% increases in revenues. And we are projecting similar increases in expenditures, with the exception of increases in STIRS and PIRS to reflect the increased rates. And the general fund restricted is also a balanced budget. And so some final considerations, PIRS and STIRS increases, if you remember, three years ago, you set aside some one-time funds to help us fund PIRS and STIRS rate increases for three years. The 1819 budget is the final year of that set aside. And so as we move into our planning for 1920, the entire weight of that, of those PIRS and STIRS increases will be included in that budget. Our other post-employment benefits rates, our contribution increases every year, those are the funds that we have to set aside to ensure that we can cover our lifetime health benefits that certain employees are currently receiving. We have included our negotiated faculty salary increases in the budget. We've included additional funding for technology and scheduled maintenance. And we'll continue to include additional funding for our technology refresh and scheduled maintenance in future budgets. And then finally, one of the things that the Planning and Budget Committee will begin to tackle at our upcoming meeting at the end of September is to shift, we started two years ago to do three-year projections, and now that we are community-supported, we're going to shift to five-year projections. It's easy for, easier for us to predict revenues going forward for a longer runway because we're not reliant, as reliant on the state budget and the changes that might take place in the state budget. So we'll be doing, preparing those five-year projections, and we will be bringing them back to you for your review and approval at a future meeting in the fall. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Great. Lots of information. Questions?
I got one quick one.
Go ahead, trustee Iverson.
Back on page 13, I was just curious, you might have this number off the top of your head, but from 2017 to 2018 budget, is there an increase in our facility improvements this time around?
So, I'm sorry, you were...
It's page 13, just facility improvements, 1.4 million. I was just curious if that was an increase from our last...
It is an increase, but the primary increase, if you're looking at the final budget versus last year's budget, is reflected in that capital projects area. So facilities improvements are typically our ongoing improvements. The capital projects is money that we're using to address the significant improvements that people ask for in their unit plans.
Would it also be reflected in salaries? Because you hired a custodian so indirectly, that's also kind of putting money into facility maintenance?
Yes, yes. So it will help us better maintain the facilities. You wouldn't see as significant an increase there because we're actually, what we're saying is, rather than having a revolving number of part-time or hourly custodians, we're going to devote those funds to hire a full-time custodian.
And that would show in the, up under the salaries versus facilities?
It would, yes.
Other questions? Josefa?
Maybe I didn't look at it, maybe I passed it. Well, what is our percentage reserve, if I might ask?
So our reserve percentage, if you're looking at our uncommitted reserve, and that's really what the state asks us to look at, because we have reserves for, in our capital outlife fund, we have reserves in our post-employment benefits fund, we have reserves in our restricted funds, but those are all things that have a specific purpose. So when we talk about reserves, we really focus on uncommitted reserves, so what's available. We're at 14, we were at 14% in 1718. We are projecting to be at 13% in 1819. And that reflects the fact, the reserve isn't changing, but as a percentage of total expenditures, total expenditures are increasing, so the percentage is shifting down a little bit.
Are the hires that you have listed already active searches?
Some of them are. Our custodian is an active search. As I said, the instructional assistants, to the extent that they were increasing hours for existing employees, that's already in the works. The shift of the .5 research analyst to 1.0, that's already in the works. Oscar, I don't believe your two are currently, I believe job descriptions are being reviewed, but those, we, those searches have not initiated yet. And that's the Director of International Students and the Dean of Student Affairs.
Thank you. Anything else, trustee Martenson?
I just have a couple of questions. I noticed legal and audit increased by 100,000. I was wondering the rationale for that. I thought that might be the Title IX investigations, but you said that was under other personal services. So I was wondering why the legal and audit increased by 100,000?
Well, the primary in legal and audit is reflecting costs of the, first of all, it's it's... first of all, it's general increases in legal expenses. But that also reflects the cost of the Board of Trustees' elections this year.
Oh, so that's under that?
That would be under legal and audit, yeah.
And then I just had a question about the two new positions. I guess I've kind of, I brought this up before that, first of all, I'm glad that you clarified it in the budget. We talked about that. I appreciate that because in the past, it hasn't been clarified upfront. And then when positions have been advertised, I've been surprised. And I think maybe some other people have been surprised as well. So I appreciate that. But I'm just wondering about those two particular positions. First, the Dean of Student Affairs. I'm just wondering how that's different than the Dean of Counseling. And then I also was wondering the purpose of the Director of International Students, what the purpose of that position is or the goals around that position.
Yes, to your first inquiry, the Dean of Student Affairs is a new position. The Dean of Counseling is a position that we hired in going on four years now. And we hired the position as a result of the Counseling Division making a decision that they wanted to change their structure from division chair to a dean. So we hired that position as dean of counseling and soon success, which is hard-willed. So this other position is different in that it's a new position. Currently with, under my arena, you might say, there's nine direct reports that are assigned to me. Nine individuals, aside from the two deans I have, the three deans that I have, that they report to me and I meet with them on a regular basis. Within those nine direct reports, six of those have been added as of the last two years. There's been programs we've added. There should be a motion program that's been added to Student Affairs. The MISA STEM program has been added to Student Affairs. Title IX activities have been added to Student Affairs. Testing has been added to Student Affairs. So there's areas that I'm feeling a bit, well, I mean, overwhelmed a bit. And so what I want to do is in order to, for me as a vice president, to function much better, not that I'm not functioning well at all, but it's simply to allow me more space to focus on those issues that are more immediate, like someone 05, the cause promise, make sure that that runs well. And also to give me more time to refocus on the Title IX. One main piece that I'm going to shift off or offload currently is student discipline because that role is very important. It's all the time-consuming at times. And so that's one of the key areas among another six or seven areas that I want to shift onto the new position. With reference to the Director of International Students, in the spring 2016, we had Nushy Sanifa, who we hired to do like a feasibility study. And the purpose of that was to interview staff and faculty and students to see how feasible creating an international program as a program to recruit students would be. And so the results of that study was that we need to do more for that population. And one of the main requirements or one of the main outcomes was that in order to really make it function as part of the institution, you need to hire someone to run it. Because currently, we don't have someone that's running the day-to-day operation, following through the outreach and recruitment and the marketing for those students, I mean, population. So this position will be assigned specifically for that. And I say that it's important role because I've always have referenced, when I was here back in 1986, '87, or '77 for that matter, we had about 115 students from throughout the world. And when I returned 12 years ago, I learned that we had like less than 30. And so I started to ask about what may have happened. And basically, I think there was some attention that was left off of that population. But also then, we had all these issues with immigration and September 9/11, those sorts of things. But I think it's important that we consider having that population grow here because not only does it add to the cultural ambiance of the institution, but I think in Napa, Napa Valley College is really a destination point that we need to really explore more and make certain that the world knows about us. So in order to do that, to be successful, it's important to have someone that reigns of that whole system. We have done things. We've increased, we've improved our website for the population. We've offered orientations, but still to really give its full effect, its full effort or earnest effort, the recommendation for the feasibility study was to hire someone.
I guess, you know, I guess that's the only one that I'm, I don't know. I'm just wondering, for example, we said this is based on the priorities. Which one would that fit under? So it's not so much to serve the international students who are here. It's more to bring in more. Is that because we're trying to raise revenue off of the higher enrollment fees? Or like you said, you said it creates ambiance. But I don't know. I'm just wondering, where does that fit in with our mission or with our five priorities, bringing in international students? Like which one do?
I'm not sure that's the correct conversation. We're kind of getting off of budget so much.
No, because the budget is supposed to be in alignment with the priorities.
We're not discussing why we're hiring someone.
It is when it's a budget decision. This is a budgetary decision. It's part of the budget. I've actually in the past mentioned that it would be great if we weren't approving new positions through budget approval. I think there could be a better process where we approve positions separate from the budget. And then, but that's not the way it's working. So that's how we approve new positions is through the budget.
So what are you trying to accomplish right now? Are you trying to not approve the budget?
No, I'm trying to figure out how that particular item fits in with the mission and within the five priorities that the budget's supposed to be based on.
And when you get the answer, then what is, what is that? I guess what I'm trying to get to is what's the resolve?
Then we did our due diligence to make sure that the budget was fit, fits with the mission and the five priorities.
So there's potentially, there's potentially something that would keep you from voting for the budget?
I'm not, I'm not there yet. I'm asking a question.
If, if I could just make a comment. Looking at where that particular request fit in, remember, we had strategic initiatives and we had operational continuance. I believe in Oscar, correct me if I'm wrong. But that was an operational continuance request, much like the institutionalization of the Napa CPR program was. These are things that currently exist. In order to make them more successful, where these particular units were asking for additional funding to improve the success of those areas.
Yeah, I mean, to answer your question, when we approve the budget, part of our fiscal responsibility is to make sure it fits with the mission. And that's why I'm asking how this fits in, trying to increase international enrollment.
If you ask me, if you're looking at the five priorities, I would say it enhances collaboration between Napa Valley College, the community, civic partners. And I think it enhances the students' overall college experience from learning from international students and cultural exchange that happens. That's where I would put it.
I'd throw in diversity.
Okay, we have a question from Trustee Iverson and then Trustee Kwajha.
And Trustee Amy, you might actually like this one. I was just curious, when you actually, Trustee Martenson, brought up the legal fees, have our legal fees been going up in the last couple of years? Have we ever like, do we look at them specifically and break down where they're coming from?
So we do. And I would say that in the 1718 year, legal fees did increase compared to 1617. There are a number of reasons for that. Some of it has to do with entering into negotiations for collective bargaining agreements, which require some information from outside legal counsel. What you talked about in closed session is an example of bringing in outside legal counsel. That's something that those kinds of issues come up throughout the year.
I just want to make one last point.
Trustee Kwajha.
I saw a line item in general fund restricted and it said unallocated funds. What does that pertain to? Does that mean that the capital we have, does that go into reserve or we just don't use that?
No. So what it means is that we get, for example, we recently received notification that the Financial Aid Office is receiving a certain allocation from the State Chancellor's office for computer improvements or technology improvements to facilitate the transfer of information and approving students for financial aid. That has not, it hasn't been determined what category that money will be spent in. So that's something that would be in unallocated funds until such time as the department determines how best to utilize those funds. The thing about restricted funds is that we can only spend them for the purpose that we, for which we received them. I'm trying to, Aaron's not here, but I'm trying to be mindful. So those funds, if we determine that we can't use those funds, we have to give them back. So they would never become part of our reserve. But in the general fund restricted area, there are times when the funds first come in, it hasn't been determined exactly what expenditure category they will be reflected in.
Okay. Anything else? Trustee Martenson?
Yeah, I just want to make one last comment about the international students. I guess where I was going with that is that that's a full-time position. I'm not saying I'm not going to vote for the budget. It's just a concern about the fact that it's an expensive position and it's not really designed to serve the student population that we have right now. And so just generally, we're a community college. I think mainly our mission is to serve our local community and the surrounding communities. So I just want to be mindful that we're not using it to raise revenue because that's not, I don't think that's our mission is to create a position to bring in students because they raise revenue. I just hope that we're mainly focusing on the students that we have here.
Okay.
Second.
Iverson Baldini. And I guess we're going to online?
Since Trustee Baldini arrived late, I'm going to have to rejig the system and add him in. Could we possibly do a different second at this time?
Do you, okay.
Okay. Thank you. And then I'll go in and clean that up. I might have to refresh it.
So then we'll all need to refresh as soon as you do that?
Probably. Probably, I think so.
So do you want to go ahead and, so for this one, we'll take a, here we go.
What's up?
Okay. You just won't see yourself in there.
Okay. So do you want to go ahead while we're discussing the next?
Vote verbally, yeah.
Yeah. And you can add, Michael, and then let us know. And then we'll refresh our page. Okay, 14.2 Bay Area Community College Consortium, strong workforce, regional fund agreement with Cabrillo College District.
I'll move approval if somebody else moves approval.
Okay, Iverson, Iverson Baker.
Okay, hang on. Let me just see if it's going to work here. Yes, okay, so that worked. I don't know if you have to refresh. So it was Iverson Baker?
Iverson Baker.
Thank you. Okay, on loading, online voting is available.
I don't know. It seems like we're all.
Circle of death, so don't do it.
Trustee Baldini, are you?
Can I ask a quick question?
Circle of death, yeah, is my response.
Maybe this is Diana, or maybe Ron, you can answer this. On the, I'm just curious, how does it end up that Cabrillo College is the fiscal agent on that?
It's the, it's following our regional consortium chairs. So Rock.
Oh.
I, Rock.
Got it.
Is out of Cabrillo. And so he manages the system.
Okay, okay, thanks. I was just curious about it, how that fell in their hands.
Well, that's one.
All right, 14.3 Napa Sonoma SBDC subaward agreement amendment. Oh, what happened?
What happened?
What happened to 14.2?
Oh, that was unanimous. Motion carried to approve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, 14.3 Napa Sonoma SBDC subaward agreement amendment number one. Do we have a motion in a second?
Second.
Iverson Segur, oh, Kwajha? Iverson Kwajha?
Online voting is available. And that carries unanimously?
Thank you. Okay, second reading of board policies. So we have the policies that we brought last month in a first reading, 2210, 2350, 2365. First of all, first BP 2210. We had no changes proposed in the first reading?
Well, actually, we did. I had a change, so I'm going to try to bring it up again, actually.
We'll go through each one, but there shouldn't be a whole lot of discussion on them.
I brought it up before and I want to bring it up again. And maybe somebody else has a different solution. But the item, where is it? Where it talks about the duties of the board chair. Actually, so it says duties of the president of the board, but earlier it says that we're not going to call it the president of the board. We're going to call it the board chair. So I don't know. But anyway, that's a little minor point. But the part that says that, about the legal, I'm trying to find it. So it says trustees who have legal questions should work through the CEO and our board chair in seeking an answer. I would again like to propose that we just add one little thing that just says, before bringing it to the whole board, or something to acknowledge that there is a next step beyond the board chair, that the board chair alone can't prevent trustees or the board from seeking a legal answer. So it's a little minor point, but if we could add, so trustees who have legal questions should work through the CEO and our board chair in seeking an answer, quote, "before going to the whole board." Or before bringing it to the whole board, something to that effect. I'd like to add that in.
I wonder, didn't we have, we had a similar conversation, I think, about adding items to the agenda also? I wonder if maybe we could?
That was the other way to put it, was to say, we talked about saying if the board chair declines to seek legal advice, it will automatically be placed on the agenda for the board, for board action. That was another option. That's actually what I brought up last time. But if that's too complicated, then just to maybe add in before bringing it to the whole board, I'd prefer something more clarity, you know, clear, like if the board chair declines to seek legal advice, that it will automatically be placed on the next agenda for board action. That would be even better, be more clear. But something, because there's a problem right now. And our purpose for these policies is to address current issues, but also future issues that might come down the road. And so I would like to see it addressed. I can frame it as a motion if you would like.
I don't, you can bring a motion, well.
And so we supposedly believe in interest-based problem solving. And so I'm saying I think there's a problem and I have an interest in clarifying it. So I would appreciate it if the board could work with me here to clarify the language so we can resolve my concern.
Can you make a motion? And then if the board agrees, then we'll?
Then we can have discussion.
Well, I kind of wanted to bring up those two choices to get some feedback before. It'll be placed on the next agenda for the board to decide.
Can I, can I make a motion to move for approval with the second reading of 22, BP 2210, as it's written under the second reading?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion. I don't know if I have a second. As it is in the second reading right now to?
Okay. So Iverson moves to approve as is. Is there a second? Okay. So that motion dies.
So let's work through them then.
I, I do not believe that, that it would be good for any chair, past, present, or future, to be held, and CEO, to be held to, that if something requests legal assistance, legal advice, that it automatically should get legal advice.
That's not what I said. That's not what I said. I said that it goes on the next agenda for the board to decide so that we can act as a whole board.
So then it's under agenda request. That's an agenda request. That's in the agenda BP. That's an agenda request.
Yeah. The problem is, is that agendas, like we've talked about, they can get kicked down the road and this would be an automatic, it's basically if you say no, then it goes on the next agenda for the board to decide. Because when we're talking about legal issues, we can't have them going on for months and months. If there's a concern that's a, a board action possibly is against our policy or against the law, it needs to be dealt with in a timely manner. So that's why I wanted it clarified here, that if the, the board declines, then it will go on the next agenda.
Does trustee Rios or Baldini have any input on suggestions or?
I, I just, to say it automatically goes on the next agenda.
The, the, of the two options, I feel like the first one is a little too, too blah and the second one's a little too restrictive, like maybe there's something in the middle.
If I can add in maybe, and Catherine, Catherine's working on all these multiplicity of, of BP's, there's, there's another BP that's corollary to this, which describes officers, you know, and one of those officers.
This is the officer BP?
Is the, yeah, sorry, sorry. Is a.
It's on page two.
It's the duties of the secretary, so it's down a little bit. So go to the secretary. There we go, sorry. So that, towards the bottom there, upon request of the board chair or a majority of the board, address all matters involving questions of law or illegal. So I think you've already got it in this policy. It would just be a majority.
But I think there's something, there's something missing here from what Amy is, is asking. She said, well, you know, this kind of tells you what the procedure is, go to the board chair or, and, or and the CEO. And I think the part maybe that, that's still kind of missing is that, well, if the chair says no, or for whatever reason, and yes, we've got this other policy, but you still have to put it on the agenda, then you would have to make an agenda request, I would think, as this policy stands. And trustee Martinson's asking, well, if I do follow the procedure and go to the chair and CEO and they say no, then it should automatically go on the agenda for the next meeting. That's because I think.
I think I understand it. And we've had, I think it goes to the merit of the request. So I, I don't believe that all requests for legal hold the same merit. Some are based in what they should be. Just because a trustee here or a trustee in the future would like to have a legal opinion on something doesn't, it may not even be, as we've talked about, within the mission or the scope of the college itself, but, but something they really want.
I don't think the board chair should be deciding the merit of the legal request. That's, if she disagrees, that's where it goes to the board to act.
It has to be.
Has to be approved by the board.
Let's not use what she thinks because that's, this is about, this is about a board chair, not about me.
Right. We're talking about board chair, so it's not up to the board chair to decide. It is.
But you use the term she. So it's good that when we're looking at these, we're not, we're not thinking of particular people. The point, the thing I think that, that I'm seeing is that we're talking about two different policies. So there's a policy about agenda requests, which you're covered, okay? You've got one on the agenda tonight. So, so this policy is simply about the person's duties, not about an agenda request. I think it's two different policies. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying your, your point doesn't have merit. It's just, it's already on another policy. That's all.
I think it would be good to clarify it here that it's okay to have some, if you think it's redundant, okay, but I think it's okay to have some redundancy in order to clarify for this board and future boards, that it doesn't end with the chair and the CEO, that there is, there is a step beyond that. And the step beyond that should be that it comes to the board and for the board to decide.
Are there, do we have guidelines on this? Ron, you were just saying it may be outside our mission, it may be, you know, not relevant to whatever may be before us, you know, whatever. Do we, do we have guidelines or?
Well, your guidelines go to the election, your internal election of your board chair. So it's, it's implicit in the recognition that the board holds that chair in esteem. They vote that chair in to represent the board. So it's somebody, if somebody has to make the call, what, what this is more of an egalitarian piece, which is nobody makes the call. If any trustee wants it, then it goes. And, and that's not the way that you're structured. You're structured right now, as all boards are, with a titular head, with, with a, with a chair. So it, it has to go somewhere and I think that in terms of the, in terms of the request, not all requests are equal. So sometimes a request might be, well, I want it to go to legal. Well, I would prefer that we, why don't we do staff time and research that for staff first, see whether we have a legal answer?
Well, that would be kind of a procedure or?
Yes.
I personally, I'm not saying that any one of us should be able to put something or send something to legal, but I like rules and processes and, you know, even if the chair, I mean, so you go to the chair, what is the chair basing it on? Their own understanding of what that is? That's what I'm getting at. I mean, there, there's no, is there some kind of procedure the chair has to look at and make a determination that, well, no, this is outside our mission. It's not relevant to the items before the board, whatever those things are, but the chair's looked at some standard. There's some standard.
Well, the chair typically passes it on to staff, so to Ron, who then determines the, you know, what investigation needs to be done.
This goes back to that we're supposed to be acting as a whole board. Yes, there's, we have a chair, but the chair's role is mainly to manage our meetings and to create the agenda. They're not, I don't think it was ever intended that they would be the ones to ultimately decide what gets reviewed by legal counsel and what doesn't. That should reside with, first with the chair, but then with the board.
This comes from the policy analyst of the league, so the CCLC, so I'm sure the other boards are operating the same way.
Well, it says you should work through, but it doesn't say what to happen if you come to an impasse and that's the issue and that's what I would like to resolve.
If you come to an impasse, then you go to the board policy about agendas and you just ask to put it on the agenda like you have and it's on the agenda tonight.
So the four ARs are on the agenda tonight that I asked to have reviewed by legal counsel.
Did you see the agenda?
Yeah, and I didn't see it on there.
It should have been on there.
It's under future agenda items. This is where we determine whether to seek legal counsel.
Okay.
I feel like, so I feel like what you're trying to get at is that, and you keep going back to agenda and it's like the whole board collectively. So what this is bringing about for me in questions is what is everybody on the board's understanding of the role of the board chair? And two, do you want the whole board approving agendas now?
I think the point is, is that they do do the agenda and we've said that agenda items should go on in a timely manner, but they don't always and I, so I don't think that something like this should be kicked down the road. And I was trying to close that so that it would be the next agenda. We know that that would come up so that the board could decide. So that's why I was, so it's a little different than a normal agenda request. I was trying to put it kind of in a special category.
Well, we're on second reading and we've spent 20 minutes on this and.
I don't think you.
Did this on the first reading, so now we're doing it on the second reading.
Yeah, because it didn't get clarified, so it didn't get resolved and I think it's an issue and it's been an issue.
What if you made it the responsibility of the chair and the vice chair? You have two people looking at it. Would that satisfy?
Well, you do have two people. It says the CEO.
Yeah, I, I can't see, well, if it's regarding the CEO, I could see that it, that it might not, but then I would rest on this, the board chair to make, recognize that. The other part of going to the board, it might be a sensitive nature that it, that you don't want it to go to the board, but I could see the expedient, you know, something that needs an answer fairly quickly, how the process could be drawn out, so.
We might be asking to have it on the closed session agenda. I, I would be okay with something even general, just for, not just our board, future boards to understand that that's not the end, that, you know, that in the end, it's the board that will decide if something goes to legal counsel. So even if it's said before going to the board, something, but just to clarify, because I think there's been confusion around that, that, that it's the, the board chair that decides and that's the end.
But then you ask to have it on the agenda and the board decides.
Can someone make a motion?
It doesn't appear to me that there's even a strong minority of the board wanting to make this change at this point. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve it as it stands.
I will second, since I motioned 20 minutes ago to do that.
All right. We have Rios Iverson with a first and a second. Can we vote?
I'm sorry. I have to add a motion here. The motion. Try this again. Okay. There we go.
Online voting is available.
I don't have the option to vote still.
It shows that it's available to you.
If you would like to do it verbally.
I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Motion carries unanimous.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. One abstention.
Okay. And that is?
The abstention is student trustee Kawaja.
Okay. BP 2350 speakers, proposed changes are reflected in the attached document. I would assume everybody's had a chance to look at that. Can we get a motion?
Go out on a limb here and make a motion for approval of BP 2350.
All right. Second. Iverson Segura.
I actually had a question about this one.
Sure.
Which I think that there was some discussion and maybe it got covered somewhere else about the need for, if someone needed an interpreter, that they would get additional time. I think it was double the time or something.
We put that somewhere.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering.
Supposed to put it in there and it's not in there.
Was it supposed to go in this one or was it go, did it?
Catherine, where was, I know we had something.
The topic of discussion on this one was where in the public comment, speakers might speak, that issue did not come up last meeting and that was a different policy, I believe.
No, both, both issues.
Does it need to be in this one as well? Was it in a different pol, I do remember seeing.
That was, yes, I'm so sorry.
They both came up, both issues.
So staff proposed the language in red and it was determined to be not clear enough and so we reconsidered and came back with, we agreed with Gary Orton's proposal that we not make any change at all to the current policy.
That's not the, yeah, so that wasn't the, the piece, though the piece.
That had to do with when.
Here, it's, it's, each speaker will be allowed five minutes, 30 minutes shall be maximum time, one subject, board meeting at the discretion of majority of the board.
Was it in a different policy?
No, it's here. It's, we were supposed to add that those needing translations get double the amount of time, 10 minutes.
Can you scroll down on this, Catherine?
Uh, yes. Don't see anything in here.
There it is, right there, right. Each speaker?
All right. So I moved to amend the motion to add that in.
I think we had that discussion possibly at public participation at board meetings. It was voted down, but we added it anyway, a sentence during the public comment where you read that people requiring translation get extra time.
So not on this?
Different policy.
Different policy.
In the other policy, we had nothing. We have no time limits. We have nothing about people getting double. That didn't happen, so I was happy to see that it's clarified in this policy, but we were going to add in the part about those needing translation, giving double the amount of time. Remember the other one, you wanted flexibility, so it got left out. Here, it actually finds, it clarifies the amount of time that speakers have.
Add something to that bullet.
Yeah, so I just want to, I moved to amend to add, and those needing translation get twice the amount of time, 10 minutes.
So trustee Baker brought up the, so was there language you, you?
If that's your motion, I'll second it, just to add the sentence there.
Yeah, I amended the motion.
Amending, amending a motion. Okay.
Okay. So first we have to vote on the amending, on the amendment.
No, you vote on the amended, yeah, amended motion, yeah.
Yes. Not the, not the actual motion, but to approve the amendment and then the motion.
So trustee Rios wanted me to say it again, so, so I moved amend the motion to add, quote, "and those needing translation receive twice the amount of time, 10 minutes."
Can you, you want to put up to or?
Maximum.
Or just twice? Is that fine?
I think that the rule is twice, yeah.
Twice, because if the amount changes at some point in time on the.
You have twice the amount of time, right?
Or 10 minutes, yeah.
Okay. So was there a second on the amend, amending, on amending the motion?
So the amendment is twice, not 10? Is that correct?
Right. Twice.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I didn't get the first motion and second.
The original one was myself and Laura Zara.
Okay, thank you.
And amended was Martinson and Baker.
Baker and Baker. Okay, thank you. Okay. We can take a vote on that.
And then we'll still need to vote on the motion itself. So the.
Okay. That is a unanimous vote. The vote carries.
Okay. So, so amending the motion passes, now let's vote on the motion itself. Can I have a motion to approve? Move to approve?
Second. I'm always confused.
I'm sorry, but I didn't get the first, uh, motion and second.
The original one?
Yes.
Myself and Laura Zara.
Okay, thank you.
And amended was Martinson and Baker.
And Baker, okay, thank you. Okay, we can take a vote on that.
And then we'll still need to vote on the motion itself. So the-
Okay, that is a unanimous vote, the vote carries.
Okay, so, so amending the motion passes, now let's vote on the motion itself. Can I have a motion to approve? Move to approve.
Second. I'm always confused by this.
Kawaja Baker.
So, what are we doing?
Yeah. First you vote to approve amending the motion, then you vote on the motion.
So-
But it was already-
He moved, nice, I-
That, that motion didn't happen. Never mind, all right. Because it got amended.
Clarify, this language isn't another policy too, right?
Similar language.
I promise you, that's right.
There's no language in the other.
Okay. Okay, so did we get a first and a second on the motion itself, please? I don't think I got that.
That was Kawaja and Baker.
And Baker, I'm sorry, 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 sorry.
Okay, so we're now approving the amended-
Motion.
Motion and amended policy.
Okay.
We're just voting to approve.
All right. There we go.
Trustee Segura, we're waiting for yours. I wanna go home. Okay, we have, uh, motion carries, one abstention is trustee Segura.
All right, and now we move to BP 2365, recording, no changes were proposed in the first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Rios Iverson.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Catherine, am I live yet?
Uh, yes, you are, and you've been voting.
Oh, I think so. Just checking my pulse.
Okay.
There we go. Somebody's been voting. Okay. So, are you ready? Voting is available. Okay, um, motion carries unanimous.
All right. Thank you. Let's move to fourteen point five, emeritus request.
Move approval.
Second.
Hang on, hang on. Uh, Baldini Baker.
Thank you. Guys are quick.
Okay, online voting is available.
Having a tough, tough time with this next agenda item.
Me too.
Oh, is that it?
I was thinking he's gonna share it.
Trustee Iverson, I do not have a, there we go, okay, motion carries, we have one abstention, Baldini.
I'm sorry, was that on fourteen five?
Yee, fourteen five, emeritus request.
Five on the emeritus.
I, I, yeah, oops.
Oops.
Do you have a quick finger?
And he moved the motion and then he ceased. Okay, I have fixed that.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Do we have the vote on that, final vote on that, so it is unanimous?
Unanimous, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Fourteen point six, resolution excusing trustee absence.
Move to approve.
Mister Baldini.
Second.
Rio Segura.
No discussion?
None, none, sorry.
Online voting is open.
I'm staying for obvious reasons.
Okay, motion carries, we have one abstention, Baldini.
All right, moving right along. Standing committee and other appointment reports. Number one, Das. Trustee Segura. No meeting, nothing to report. Trustee Baldini, Vediculture Winery Foundation.
Yes, we did have a meeting on the twenty-first day of August, uh, some standout items, um, the budget, motion to approve the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen final budget passed, and, uh, included thirty, an additional thirty thousand dollars in revenue from the sales of bulk wine. And Molly Hodgkins, she's a, uh, Vediculture professor, or, or instructor, she was, uh, elected vice chair of the foundation. On the vineyard management side, uh, Molly Hodgkins went on to say that the, the health and quality of the harvest are, are, are right, the installation of new water pump is great help, so that we're weaning off the, the water from the sanitation district because of, uh, possible damage to the grapevines from salinity in the, in the water, so, the well, which will, um, lead to the installation of a drip irrigation system, uh, will be, uh, reputed to be a, a significant improvement in the, in the health of the vines. As far as wine production, Paul Gospodarsek, uh, the instructor for the VWT program, um, Pinot harvest looks very good, uh, three wines, Cabernet, Chardonnay, and Pinot Noir received, uh, scores in the ninety-plus area, ninety-one for the Cabernet, Chardonnay, Chardonnay, and Pinot Noir, both nineties, again, student-made wine, uh, the, um, and Paul went on to say that, discussed the selling of the wine by the glass to increase wine sales, uh, at numerous college events, um, especially at the Performing Arts Center, and, uh, one of the, Paul Wagner, uh, also an instructor, as well as a member of the foundation, mentioned, uh, that one of the former students had come up with a strategic marketing plan, and the next step with the foundation will be the marketing plan, including, uh, wine club, and the meeting was adjourned at six thirteen PM.
Thank you, trustee Baldini. Legislative Affairs Committee, we did meet, and, uh, determined that we will meet again before the end of the year, and what, what Ron brought to the table was a sample of a legislative calendar that really focuses on our priorities, um, as Napa Valley College, what our priorities are, and how that would affect, uh, legislative, uh, legislation that would be coming up in the next year, and I think that trustee Baker was also going to follow up with, um, some things as well, and so, instead of letting legislation drive us, you know, we'll have a legislative calendar that will help us keep an eye out on legislation that's happening, uh, that, that really meets our mission. Okay? For Audit and Finance Committee?
So, um, we weren't able to have our meeting last Thursday, so it's been rescheduled to next Thursday at four PM here in the boardroom.
Real Property Management Committee meeting?
We did meet, I, do we have minutes on that?
Sorry, it's the following Thursday, the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
I didn't see any draft minutes on that, so I'll just go by my recollection, aided by the, my colleagues, Raphael and, and Kyle, so we listened to a, a, um, the, um, Napa Valley Wine Train, represented by Greg Bruin, on, kind of conceptual, on, uh, when they might have, uh, a plant present, uh, and that, uh, we're going to poll them and see if they might be ready in time for our next board meeting, so we're looking to meet on October fourth, and, uh, so, Dr. Kraft's gonna follow up with the wine train and see if we could secure them. Uh, the, the proposal, uh, it looks, looks sound, but, uh, we're still not without sufficient information to, to, uh, move it on to the full board at this point, so they're going to make a, a little bit more formal present, presentation. Uh, there was some concern whether or not they could be done by the first week of August, October, to, uh, enable us to bring it to the Oc-tober meeting, if warranted, so that's the- That, that might be an idea, yes. So, I had, uh, another thing, this is going back, if I may, to the Vediculture Winery Technology, uh, Foundation, I, I failed to mention that, uh, the Pinot Noir crop was sufficient enough for the advanced wine-making, uh, program, uh, class to begin the process for a sparkling wine, which is, uh, the first I've heard of, uh, as far as a community college producing a sparkling wine, so perhaps we'll have some ships to launch, and buildings to christen, and things like that in the future.
Thank you. Um, and Mc, McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award, nothing at this point, right? Okay. Thank you on the standing committee reports. Now we'll go to future agenda item, items request, item request. Let's look at real quick, 'cause I have a question, let's look at the log. Um, I think I have a question for Baker. Maybe. Maybe. Hold on.
This one?
Um. Oh, yes, the resolution on gun control. What did you want happening on that?
That was right after, um, sorry. Right after the, um, shooting in Parkland, I believe, um, and I don't honestly recall what my thinking was, I'd be happy to go back and review what I said, and see if I can piece it back together.
Okay.
Um, I do, I do think it would be, um, interesting to bring something forward, but we need to figure out how to, how to encapsulate it within the purview of the board.
Mm-hmm, so maybe, uh, a gun safety res, something-
Something.
On campus, that applies on campus.
What's already in place, so you need to find out that as well. I could, I could follow up.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get Ken to it.
Okay. That was the one I had a question about, does anybody have any additional questions or comments on anything that is on, um, this log?
Time, time out here.
So where's my item supposed to be, 'cause I don't see it on the log?
It's on the request.
It's on the request.
It's not on the log yet, because it, it's not. Okay, so then there is currently a request that, uh, I've moved forward to the agenda, Martinson requests legal counsel to review Chapter Two procedures and corresponding changes to policies. Um, I'll let trustee Martinson explain what this is.
Yeah, so, back in December twenty seventeen, the board, um, were looked at, we didn't vote on them because they're APs, um, but they're four APs related to our Chapter Two bylaws. Um, so there's one on board duties, responsibilities, and board reports, one on agendas, one on decorum, and one on minutes, um, and at that time, I started expressing concerns that there's a, a line being blurred between what goes in policy and what goes in these ARs, um, and so, I wanted legal counsel to review that, because there's things in these ARs that are talking about how we conduct our meetings, um, and when you look at the board policy that distinguishes the difference between board policy and ARs, the difference is, is that board policy are, come from us, and APs come from the president, and they're operational, and how he carries out our board policies. So, there are a lot of things in these ARs that are about us, how we conduct our, our meetings, and the president doesn't have purview over how we, we conduct our meetings, we do, ourselves, we manage ourselves, so that's one question I wanted them to look at, uh, the legal counsel to look at, uh, this issue of, are there things in these ARs that shouldn't be there and should actually be in board policies, that's one question. The second is, I had specific, uh, questions about these, so one of them says, under, the one under board reports, that we're required to disclose, uh, sources of information in our board reports, um, that's not enforceable, I don't think we can be required to do that, so there was a question about that. Um, I also had a question about our new agendas protocol, which we're engaging in right now, and whether that creates a Brown Act issue, when we're start to go deep into discussion about items that are not yet on the agenda, um, so I wanted that looked as well. So basically, these are new, they're completely new, they're how we do our business, and I would like the legal counsel to review them to make sure that they're appropriate, um, both in terms of what's there, and whether they should actually be in board policy, and then also specific legal points.
Could I jump in real quick with one question?
Sure.
Weren't you just questioning earlier about legal fees?
I asked why they went up a hundred thousand, and I don't think it's because of us, if that's what you're trying to get at, trustee Iverson. And I wasn't implying they were too much, I was asking what they were for, but they're certainly not because of us, I think it's probably because of, uh, different lawsuits and pending litigation.
I'm sure you got that, but-
It isn't.
I'm not gonna argue with you about it, I'm just curious why we would need to be going through this and sending this to legal counsel.
Because I have concerns that there are things in these APs that shouldn't be there, so part of our job is to uphold our policies, there's a policy that distinguishes board policies from ARs, I don't think that fits this policy, I think there are things in these ARs that should be in board policy, and there are specific points that I don't think are legal, I don't think we can legally be required to disclose sources of information, in fact, the law says that there are certain sources of information that we legally can't disclose, if they're privileged, um, and I also have a concern about this new agendas process, as I stated before, that it's creating Brown Act violations, as we are right now talking about items that are not on the agenda, so-
It is on the agenda.
Whoa, okay.
It's not as, no.
You could ask-
Discussion of putting it-
It's called future agenda requests.
Right.
That's it, so, now we're going deep into, as I said before, the merits of these items, where my proposal was that we just put them on the agenda and then discuss them when we do agenda approval, so we're, either way, we're discussing them. My proposal was that if we discuss them under agenda approval, at least they're on the agenda to discuss and take off, but instead, we're doing it in this, uh, under future agenda requests, which I think creates a Brown Act issue, and in fact, I remember Laura talking during one of our workshops that she didn't like this item, and now I'm starting to see why, because I think it does create Brown Act issues, so, regardless, these are new, we've never had them before, I think it's appropriate for our legal counsel, who represents our board, to look over them, to make sure that they're appropriate, and that they're correct.
These aren't some of the ones that you sent to the DA that you talked about last time, are they?
The agendas, yes, because I couldn't get any resolution with this board, so, again, we say that we want consensus, I have a concern, this is how we do our business, and I'm asking for the board to allow our lawyer to review them, to make sure they're appropriate. When we do the board policies, we have templates, and even when we de- Just a second, I just have one last point, when we do our board policies, we have templates from the CCLC, and when we deviate from them dramatically, we, we've been told they should be reviewed by legal counsel, these were brand new, created from scratch, with no template, and so, and they are talking about how we as a board are going to function, and I would like them reviewed by our legal counsel. So I'm actually gonna move to, uh, I'm gonna make a motion, that-
They're, they're-
What, I, we should have the motion on the table, if we're gonna be discussing.
We don't have a vote on this.
Yes, we can.
No, we look for a minority?
No, we can make, I'm gonna make a motion, I have every right to make a motion under this item, and to get it in the public record, and I want it in the public record, so I'm moving that we have the four ARs that were approved, or that were reviewed on December twenty seventeen, reviewed by legal counsel.
I'm not gonna second, but I'm gonna note that, public record, that you've also already said that you're, if the board goes forward with something, you're going behind the board and going to the district attorney, right?
If, if I think so, there's an issue, Kyle, I will, I prefer that we, we use our only go counsel, that's what they're there for.
It's just public record, I'm fine, I'm not-
If I think there's a problem, and I can't get it resolved with our attorney, because we block access to our attorney, then I'll do what I have to do, trustee Iverson, I'm trying to use our attorney right now, through the board.
So we did not, so we just went against policy, because policy says to get this on the agenda, it needs a significant minority, it's not about a vote.
Okay, we have every right to pass motions, and to be transparent, I want to get it in the public record, that I'm trying to get this on the agenda, so I'm moving, and I have every right to make a motion, I'm moving that we have these four ARs that were reviewed on December, at the December twenty seventeen meeting, referred to legal counsel. If there's no second, that's fine, but I want it in the public record, that I moved and tried to get this reviewed by legal counsel.
I'm not seconding it, but I do have a, a-
I'm not seconding it, but I do have a concern about the process here because I'm confused as to what we're actually doing. It's like this kind of brings up and kind of proves the point that Amy was making earlier about changing it where this would have become an agenda item, not a discussion of a future agenda item, because it's like, are we voting to put it on a future agenda that then we would discuss it?
Right.
Or are we talking about...
It's to vote it, to put it on the agenda. So, in our policy, it says that if an agenda request comes to me, like the very next day after our last board meeting, comes to me, and in looking at it, in sharing conversation with, you know, Ron, if it looks like something that doesn't make sense, then I'm going to put it here for us to get a significant minority of the board, which is three people, to say, yeah, go ahead and put it on the next agenda, or go ahead and put it on the agenda for us to vote on.
So, we don't need a motion to do that?
This was not the process that our lawyer gave us to follow.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
This was not the process she recommended.
You're not... Excuse me. Okay? There are other people talking right now, and we'll let everybody have an opportunity here. So, that is the process to do that. And so, but there now is a motion, and we're either looking for a second or not a second. And I want to be very clear, too, is that if the day before this request came, we already approved those board policies, that this is reflecting that if we make changes on those ARs, we got to go back and redo policies that our last meeting we just approved.
Only if the lawyer says there's a problem. If there's a problem, then yes, we need to go back and take it out of here and perhaps put it into a board policy or take it out altogether if she says there's a problem.
I'm just... I'll go on record as saying I would support having legal review this, whether or not that needs to go on an agenda, future agenda for the board to vote on. I don't... I'm not sure I understand, but if that's the case, then I would recommend that.
So, are you second? You're... She's made a motion.
No, I'm not seconding the motion. I'm just saying that I am part of the minority, I guess.
So, then the motion dies.
To clarify, the request is to put trustee Martenson's request, the legal counsel review these ARs on the agenda, right?
Yes. Right.
Okay. I'm in favor of that. Whether you've got three people now and it can come back on the agenda, is that the rule?
That's the rule. So, we will put it on the agenda, and it'll come up for a vote, whether or not to do that.
I just want to make a... It's been voted, I know, but a comment. Trustee Martenson, you know, said that we're breaking the Brown Act because we're discussing future items, agenda items, before they go on the agenda, and I think we just had this. How long of a discussion on something? We just broke, but what I'm saying, we just broke the Brown Act because you were leading the discussion.
Because how do you convince people to put it on the agenda without talking about it? That's what's wrong with this system.
Exactly. So, we keep breaking the Brown Act.
I didn't ask for this system.
On the record, I disagree with that statement.
It's a very common policy for other boards and other districts. I've checked.
Well, we could talk about this when it comes back.
Checks and balances because we have...
Chair, could we move on?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. Sorry about that. Okay. Any other future agenda items?
Yes, I have two, and this might be for the real property. But I was on campus last Thursday evening. I called the NBC PD, let them know I was on campus as I was turning onto Magnolia Drive at the north entrance, and which this man, I identified as a male, came out of our property.
Was this the one that was naked?
And yes. And though proximate to the Performing Arts Center, I discounted that he could have been an actor or anything like that. I believe that we need an agenda item either at the real property to begin the conversation about security fence and about that upper camp, that upper portion of the campus that I believe presents a threat to the students for folks to be living in there and doing whatever they're doing on our property without any sort of... It's just going to be a problem, and I could just... We've had fires up there. We've had emergency response units coming there, whether it's police or fire department.
So, the agenda request is simply what? What's the actual...
The study, the security fence or some sort of to protect this campus, to protect our students from harm, just a conversation, just...
Do you have that, Catherine, as an agenda request? Michael?
The second one was, and this is a D 3410. I don't know if the board has any responsibility over it at all, but I'd like to, at least the dialogue or the conversation. It's our smoking policy on campus, and there might be staff members that still smoke. I don't know. But just even the vaping is not included. It's just a concern. So, I just wanted to...
So, smoking on campus?
Smoking on campus and inclusive of other forms. It just identifies tobacco, but it excludes vaping and excludes other things that might be of interest, that just that it be reviewed and brought back.
Don't we need to talk about if there's a significant minority for each of those? Are we going to do that?
Yes.
No, the question is, are we just... Is anybody saying, no, Michael, we won't do that?
I don't know. We haven't asked yet.
Pardon me?
We didn't talk about it, so it just seems like they're automatically going on.
Well, the only way that would happen is if somebody said, no, Michael, I don't want that on there. If there's a disagreement, then we have to seek the significant minority.
What I was looking for, trustee Amy, was, no, Michael, it's not in your purview as the board to discuss something like that. That's what I was looking for.
So, I'm wondering about the fencing if...
I thought we weren't going to discuss the merits.
Exactly.
Are you interested in him not having that on the agenda?
I'm interested in the both of those items.
I'm fine with both of the items.
Okay. So, they will be on the agenda, and there may be some research that needs to be done, so maybe it's next month, maybe it's not.
Yeah, and I captured that.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd like the housing policy at some point to come on the agenda to talk about adding in from that one meeting where we set some parameters around the student housing. We set several parameters that it would be for students, that it would be, the focus would be on affordability for students, that there would be no deep amenities. We set those... I'd like to see that in the policy. So, I'd like the policy to come back to possibly add that in.
You have a policy?
And codify it.
I don't get it.
You have a policy?
So, we have a housing policy, and at one of our board meetings when we were talking about housing, we set some board level direction about the parameters around student housing, but that's not in the policy. And so, I'd like it to come forward so we can talk about codifying that in the board As I said once, it's not, doesn't exist if it's not in the policy, and we just talked about it informally, but we did reach consensus on those points.
So, without, just so I can clarify, so without being too specific, you'd like a campus housing policy to come back?
Yeah, there is a board policy on housing, but it doesn't have, it's a generic template.
But you'd like to come back and propose some...
Yeah, so we can adjust it to specify some of the parameters that we talked about and agreed upon as a board.
Is it part of the policies that we're reviewing?
Well, I think that's why I was trying to... You would like to bring that policy back for review?
Yeah, for review. Possible revision.
Okay. Any other agenda request? Are we absolutely sure? Nothing tomorrow, trustee Martenson?
Nope. Hopefully not.
Okay.
I won't promise.
All right. So, that's a gender request, and trustee and board chair reports. Trustee Cuajha, why don't you start for us?
Thank you. I'll just keep it short. Starting 10th, 11th, and 12th of August, I attended the trustee workshop in San Francisco. Then, moving on to 13th and 14th, the next day, we had our welcome back tables by ASNVC. Then, at 16th of August, I became a part of a hiring committee. Then, I attended the student success committee recently. Then, we elected our sergeant-at-arms in our previous ASNVC meeting. And for tomorrow, Friday, September 14, I will be attending the gala by Napa County Hispanic Network. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Baldini?
Let's see. Number one, just to the temporary in the president's office, Dr. Kraft's office, April Torres receiving my call today and just telling me, no worries, we'll get the message. So, that was nice, being able to... And let's see, that I was going to be a little tardy this evening. Lots of things going on I can't disclose right now, but I'm working with the foundation.
That's it? Thank you. Trustee Baker?
Not a whole lot. I'm actually glad that you brought up the idea of the security issue up north, because when I came for the budget presentation and I walked, and then I walked home, and as I was walking home, I went through that whole back area, and there was a moment where I thought, gosh, I'm all alone. Just kept walking, but didn't think about it, but it did kind of occur to me that there's not a lot of security back there. Anyway, so I came to that, been coming to the leadership program and really enjoying that. I understand that the gala table tomorrow is full. If anybody has a flat tire, please call me because I have the cutest outfit that must be worn.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and do mine if everybody would just, if you could. It was, for some reason, stapled at the bottom corner, but this is the first page. So, and then the back page is...
First page? That implies many pages.
Upside down. Pardon me?
He's messing with you with the amount of pages.
So, maybe some coaching on printing things, two-sided, to be flipped on the short edge versus the long edge. So, I attended the budget forum, did the AB 705 webinar, went to this incredible night at the ruins in American Canyon. There was probably 500 people there. I don't know. It was just amazing. It was such a great event. And then this. And so, I don't need to really say much about this. I just wanted to show everybody kind of what's happening, but really, look at the back page. Look at the picture. That should kind of tell you. It is a bus, and you see it says pathways to work. So, this is going to be, and it already exists, the bus already exists, it's being branded, and this is going to be a bus that can go out in the middle of Mendocino County, somewhere very rural, and be able to provide all of the services that you would receive at a career point center. And, you know, it just, it connects so well with what we do here because I could picture just in my head, you know, we're out there somewhere on this bus, providing these services. There's an individual whose house just burnt down, and their job site is burnt down, and they go through these services, and these services send them to Napa Valley College to train to be a psychiatric technician, and then hopefully someday they've got some great housing because they just lost their house. And it just all, you know, can come together with this beautiful bus. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it. That's my report. Trustee Iverson?
So, I attended the 9/11 memorial downtown by Sunrise Rotary. We've been doing it for a long time now, and got to hear Dr. Kraft speak, and it was a... He actually had a couple people misty-eyed out in the crowd, so that was neat, and it was a really good memorial, and I will never forget that day. So, that's my report.
Trustee Sekura?
I attended the final budget presentation. Great. You'd never get told. I also attended the last game the Silverados played for the season. It was awesome. 14-4. So, it was good. And also saw the webinar. The webinar? And I'm looking forward... I'm sorry, I don't think I'm going to have a flat tire tomorrow.
Me neither.
And I'm looking forward to going to the Police Academy graduation on Saturday.
Oh, that, too. Trustee Rios?
My apologies to the Audit and Finance Committee for getting my calendars crossed, and I did the webinar on 705, and I think that was it. Thanks.
Trustee Martenson?
I did the webinar on AB 705. That's it.
So, now we are to... Hold on a second. Word to announcement of future meetings. 10/11/18 is our next regular meeting, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. Meeting adjourned.